Okay. Okay, now the time is six thirty-seven and we'll call the meeting to order. This is Freeport Town Council Meeting Number Zero Three Dash Twenty-Two, February first, two thousand twenty-two. Start with a roll call. Do we have Counselor Pillsbury here?
Present.
Counselor Fornier.
Here.
Counselor Lawrence.
Here.
Counselor Daniele.
Here.
Counselor Bradley.
Here.
And Vice Chair Egan.
Here.
The Chair Pilch is here as well. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is waiving the reading of the minutes from our previous meeting, Number Zero Two Dash Twenty-Two, held on January eighteenth, and to accept the minutes as printed. Thank you, Counselor Bradley.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Our last set of minutes from Secretary Coffin. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it, and take the chance to welcome our new secretary. Thank you, Christine Wolf, for taking minutes tonight. All right, third order of business, I have some announcements to read. Join the town of Freeport from February third to the seventh for a public design workshop for the Freeport Downtown Vision Plan. The project team will host an open studio in downtown and facilitate roundtable discussions, an open house, and workshops to co-design the future of downtown Freeport together with the community. For more information and to register, visit FreeportDowntown.me, and Mary will tell us more about that in a few minutes. The AARP Foundation has a tax aid program. If you visit their website nearly into January, you should find the site locator tool where you enter a zip code and find locations nearest you for in-person tax preparation. Their website is AARP.org. Short-term residential rental registrations expire March first of each year. Renewals that have made no changes to the property during the licensing year will only need to resubmit the two-page application, an updated insurance policy, or proof of coverage, and the one hundred dollar fee per rental. And lastly, exit twenty and twenty-two bridge replacement projects. A pre-construction meeting is scheduled for February third between the main DOT, town staff, and contractors. This meeting will provide project details concerning the construction start dates, traffic management, and sequencing. Please stay tuned for further information regarding these projects. Information will be shared as it becomes available at council meetings, on social media platforms, and the town's website. Do any other councilors have announcements about upcoming events?
Is this information exchange?
Not yet. That's next. Any other announcements?
Nope.
Seeing none, we move on to information exchange, which is a time for councilors to share and exchange any information. Counselor Bradley.
I have a couple of things. One, Island Rover, I reported on that at the last meeting, said that I thought there was progress, and in fact, there has been. A substantial launch plan has been brought forward by the applicant, and it's been reviewed by some volunteers from, town volunteers for, from Bath Iron Works who have commented on it. I've met with Adam and Peter on it, and Adam reports that he has looked into the roads and has no problem with that. He's looked into the tacking of the railway onto the ledge that they proposed, and he has no problem with that. He does want to consult with another level of expertise, and he's in the process of getting that done. So I'm getting encouraged that we're, I'm gonna have something, we're gonna have something to look at in the next meeting or two on the Island Rover, and that's, that excites me. The other thing I'd like to bring up is that, I don't know how many of you saw it, but Wolf Next Center for Agriculture and the Environment got a two-point-five million-dollar grant from the federal government to finish the Smith Center, which was the last piece of their development program that they began five years ago through private fundraising in town. And it's an enormous asset for the community, and I think anybody who can reach out to anybody on that board, or to Dave Herring, or to Jeanne Matts, and any of the people who've been working on this, recognize all that the town has done, and what an amazing place that's gonna be at one end of our town when that's finished. And then the third thing I'd like to just say is that, and this is, this is really preliminary, but, you know, there's, there's going to be a presentation from the sewer district to engineers, to the FEDC on the twenty-third to talk about sewer district improvements. There's also talk in the town about sewer district connection fees, and after a number of discussions last week or so, I'm beginning to believe that there is a real opportunity for people who have for a long time not been exactly on the same page to turn a page and come together to talk about how a lot of different good things could happen in the, in the sewer world for Freeport. So I encourage us all to keep that in mind.
Yep. Add to that, the vice chair and I sat down with the sewer district and the water district about a month ago and had some preliminary discussions, and I'm hopeful that they'll continue.
Great.
Any other items for information exchange? Counselor Pillsbury?
Just a few things. One, the event on the twentieth from the Freeport Climate Action Now, they had their digital launch, it went really well. I encourage everyone to go, it's up on YouTube, they can watch, and there's a call to action to join some of the committees they've set up. I think it's a great way for people to get involved. I would encourage you to check that out. The January newsletter for the RSU, I thought, was a particularly good read. I encourage everyone to go to the RSU Five website to look at it. Superintendent Foley had a really well-written piece on the racist incident that happened in our town in November, and about the work that's being done at the school level on education around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And there was also a letter by Bonnie Violet, the Director of Instructional Support for the RSU, talking about the journey that the new Mainers that are in our town now have endured, and I think it's really eye-opening. And for those of you who don't know, we've welcomed a lot of new Mainers into Freeport, and so I urge everyone to reach out to Freeport Community Services. They're, they have targeted needs that they have, so please reach out if you're able to, and you can support them. It will go a long way, and if you can't, just please welcome them to our town. This is a great thing for us, and I encourage everyone to do what they can. And the last thing I just wanted to mention, I just wanted to thank Dan and John for putting that statement out about the incident that happened in November, and I hope we get a chance to discuss it. And, you know, I've got some questions around what we can do. It's a little troubling to me that, you know, we only learned about it through the action of the Attorney General's Office. I think there's a way for the town to be more engaged and receptive to feedback around incidents that happen, and we can be more proactive in our response, so I look forward to that. But thank you for putting that statement out, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and to clarify, add some, some context, we, we wanted to get something out quickly, and we didn't have a meeting scheduled for, for close to two weeks or so from the time that incident kind of made the papers, so, so that's why it didn't come from the whole council. It's not because we asked the council and we didn't get approval, it wasn't that at all, it was just a matter of expediency for us to be able to say that, that we can issue that quickly, and hopefully tonight, we can, you know, discuss it and come to some consensus if we want to do that as a council as well. Yeah, to that end, did you wanna share your information?
Thanks for the segue, Matt. I'm the liaison for the town council's Social and Racial Equity Committee, and I'm gonna read something in a minute here that the committee actually wrote last, late last fall, late November, finalized it, and awaiting for official action to reconvene that committee, which we took at our last meeting. I'm now ready to read this. It looks very timely considering discussion, but I just want to point out that the committee actually drafted this nondiscrimination statement before this particular horrendous incident was in our news. "A proclamation in support of inclusion, social justice, and nondiscrimination in the town of Freeport, whereas it is imperative to the town of Freeport mains goals, Freeport mains goals, that we are a welcoming and inclusive community to all who seek to live, work, play, and thrive peaceably within our boundaries, and whereas the residents of Freeport welcome and embrace people from all races, creeds, and orientations and beliefs, we are stronger as a society when we enthusiastically do so, and whereas the town of Freeport is committed to building trust amongst all its residents, including continued work and collaboration to ensure inclusion and welcome diversity, whereas the municipal departments of the town of Freeport will uphold and advance the goals of social justice, and that all members of the community have the right to peacefully raise their families, seek economic and academic opportunities free of discrimination." Now therefore, the Freeport Town Council, on behalf of the town of Freeport, do hereby resolve, "All Freeport residents, visitors, and guests, regardless of race, color, ethnicity, or gender identity, are entitled to be treated with compassion, dedication, and equality in the pursuit of a peaceful life. In the strongest terms possible, hatred and bigotry, overt and subtle, will not be tolerated by the town of Freeport or its officials or employees in any form, and the town of Freeport commits to ensure its employees are trained in both implicit and explicit bias against any population, to ensure that the ideals of fairness and equality are upheld," proclaimed today, first day of February twenty-twenty-two. So that is from our Social and Racial Equity Committee, drafted about six or eight weeks ago.
Is that coming before us to be adopted?
I would like it to, yeah. It was in our packet, it was part of the materials, and I would, I would like for us to, to endorse that statement.
I think it was in the, I don't think the packets emailed any more of it. It should be in the packet, and it should, which means it should be on the table in the back there.
Didn't come in email.
I didn't see it in the email.
That's the first I heard it, Steve. But, okay, I like it.
Do, so we should have copies if anybody wants to take a look at it, who didn't see it, or doesn't have it.
I'll have to defer on process here, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, well, I mean, if people are comfortable reading it and affirming it, I'm okay with that, it's a one-page statement. No, I don't have paper copies of things, so I don't have it. Does anyone need a copy who doesn't have a copy?
Nope.
Everyone has.
Okay.
I'll just write it.
Okay. Does anybody have comments?
Still reading.
What, what are the goals of the social justice? What are those? That's pretty broad. Whereas municipal departments of the town of Freeport will uphold and advance, advance the goals of social justice.
I think the point of that statement, if I can paraphrase the discussion at the committee, was the goal is that everybody is treated fairly.
Can we say that? Everyone's treated fairly? I mean, because...
I think we do say that.
Well, it just says the goals of social justice. What is the goal of, if it's, if it, if the goal of social justice is treat everybody equally, then let's say that. Because if the goals of justice is just goals, it can change. Change the definition, change whatever, I mean, that's all I'm saying.
Anybody else who feels that way, who wants to change the wording?
I would suggest we either vote on it as is, or we could do this under other business for tonight, but I mean, I feel comfortable adopting as is.
Anybody else feel strongly about changing language or adopting as is? How about a show of hands, anybody all in favor of endorsing it as is? One, two, one, two, three, four, five. And any opposed to endorsing it as is?
Yeah. Just change that from a goal to, hey, treat everybody fairly. I mean, that's, that's what I'm asking. To the goals of social justice being, well, what are those?
Do you want to propose some wording, maybe an amendment, so if we can get to unanimous, we could do that?
Uphold and treat everybody fairly, and all members have the right to, yeah, well, let's see, uphold the goal of treating everybody fairly, and that all members of the community have the right to live peaceably, raise their families, and seek economic and academic opportunities free of discrimination.
All right, so new language proposed, anybody second that?
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion on that language?
John, is that acceptable to you, Counselor Egan?
Yeah, that's acceptable to me. I mean, that's different from what the committee proposed, but I think it's close enough that it's acceptable.
Everybody comfortable with that? All right, so let's take a formal vote on that. So adopting the, let's take a vote on the amendment first, everybody in favor of changing the language? All right?
Aye.
And any opposed? So one opposed, six in favor, Counselor Bradley opposed, and then all in favor of adopting the entire statement as amended. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous, seven to zero. Thank you, and thank you to the committee for bringing that up, and thank you, Counselor Egan, for sharing it with us, and thanks to the council for supporting it. Any other information exchange items before we move on? I know we have Mary standing by for downtown vision update. So we'll, we'll do that. We have our big downtown design week, or weekend, really, coming up this, this coming weekend, which I hope everybody who wants to has registered for. If not, FreeportDowntown.me. There's an opening session, there's some one-hour blocks to talk about topics in detail. I have received some comments about people that can't make it, or want to participate but aren't sure how. You can always reach out to any of the seven of us, or to anybody on the project team, which includes Mary, who we'll hear from in a minute, Caroline Pelletier, our town planner. All of the comments kind of go into a big bucket, and then they're distilled from there, so it don't feel like you're not gonna have as much weight to your comments if you send them in outside the, the weekend channels. There are also some appointment blocks you can book with the planners who will be here this weekend. They're taking appointments, you can book those online as well. Let me turn it over to Mary, you can give a summation of where we've been, and where we're going, and what's up next. Are we ready to bring Mary on? We are?
Can you hear me?
I think we can.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Okay, because I couldn't hear you all to begin with, so I hope you can hear me now. Thank you all. Woo-hoo, we're here, and we're quite excited that this weekend is coming up, there's been a lot of preparation for it, and we're, we're very excited that it's here. If you can put up the, the one-page poster, Caroline. Some people have called me and worried about weather, and you know what? We are Mainers, and so we are gonna make it through this weather. On Thursday, it's supposed to rain, we're gonna have a kickoff session, so bring your umbrella. On Friday, it's gonna snow, so just bundle up and zoom in, and you can be on the workshops. So, rain or sign, here we come. Caroline, can you pull that up? I don't, I can't hear you all anymore.
Want to try her again, see if she can come in now?
She's definitely frozen.
She's definitely frozen, yeah, okay. Yeah.
She's frozen on this one, though. What's the difference?
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's something going on with...
Because it's showing four red bars.
That's what's on cable, channel three, this is what's on Zoom, and this is also what's on Zoom. Zoom has been a complete disaster tonight. It does not...
Oh, maybe it's...
Zoom just went down, it's gone down two times already.
Okay.
So, not on our internet connection, and so if you just want to get him with just a second, try to reboot.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll start talking in the meantime, because I know what Mary, the gist of what Mary is gonna say, and if she can hear me, she can, she can fill in the, the gaps. There is a schedule, which we were gonna show you, but it's also online, and let me just make sure I get the dates right, but Thursday night, we have an opening session, which is in-person. There are a few events that are in-person, there are three in particular, that are both in-person and online, so they're hybrid events. One is the opening event, which is Thursday night. One is an open house, which is outside on the lawn, weather pending, from three to five on Saturday. That one's not gonna be online, that's in-person only. And then we have a closing session, which is Monday night, I think, six or six-thirty, and that's also hybrid. The opening and closings will be at the high school, and in the cafeteria in the Performing Arts Center. All of the one-hour topic sessions are online only, so we have a topic session, for instance, on creating a business ecosystem. We have one on walking and biking and accessibility and so forth, I think we have six or seven. And we have, as far as numbers, between eighty and a hundred people signed up for each of those topic sessions, which is fantastic. The planners that we're working with usually say they get about twelve people to show up, sometimes twenty, so this is very encouraging, and not surprising, given how, how much I've heard from people who want to be involved. What else? That's the gist of it. I encourage everybody to, to come, like I said. Do we have Mary back? Want to give that a shot, and see if I missed anything?
Give it a shot.
Am I back?
Yes, you are.
I'm back? Okay, I don't know if it's gonna freeze again or not. Thank you, thank you, Chair. A couple things that I'd like to say is that I know that where we are right now is, we started out with the surveys, we're now going down into the specifics, so the, the community told us what they wanted. Now, this week is about going into the next level of detail to say specifically what we want. So Principal is gonna bring some illustrations, some questions, to really ask us what we want. You know, some of these ideas may seem like common sense, some of these ideas could be provocative, some of these ideas we may not like at all, but that's exactly the point of it, because it helps us then to clarify what it is we do and don't want, so that we can get to the next step, which is our finalized plan. So, it's pretty exciting. I know that some folks are disappointed that the workshops are virtual, but you can see from how many people we have at these workshops, it's fabulous. As, as Chair said, typically they get twenty or such people at these workshops, we've got nearly a hundred. So our decision to have everyone participate was that we would go to all virtual so that everyone could participate in the discussion, and we think it's a great way to make sure that everybody's involved, because remember, these workshops are just the beginning of the discussions. You know, in an hour's time, we're not gonna be able to discuss every detail, but it gives people the flavor so that they continue the discussions in the community. Now, there's lots of ways to put in feedback and to get information into, into Principal. I hope all of you received today, there was a newsletter that was sent out to six hundred and twenty-five people, and this is the newsletter, please, 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 open it, look at it, read it, and print off, there's an addenda in it, because this will tell you how it's coming up, that you can, you can sign up if you haven't already. It tells you about a link, tells you about what the events are like, it tells you a link that has some workshop pages in it that I'd like you to look at. It has you a way to be able to sign up for one-on-ones with the Principal group, should you choose to, and it also tells you that we're recording all of these, so there'll be a way to see the sessions. So within the worksheets, this is a really important packet, because within this worksheet packet, what it gives to you is, and again, print it out, it gives you another agenda so you can see it, it also gives you the content or the agenda for all of the events that are occurring. A bit of a town map, it shows you what we're looking at, and for every session, it gives a worksheet, that when you come to the workshops, you can fill out this worksheet, you can discuss it during the workshop, you can come in and do a one-on-one to talk to Principal directly, and you can give this to Principal so that it ends up in all the discussions. So, we're super excited about this week, please come, please give us your input, because this is what's gonna go into our final planning. So, hope to see and hear all of you there.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions about the design week, weekend? I know we talked a lot about it, it's exciting that it's finally here. Awesome. Very exciting, thank you again, Mary.[1516.15][1516.15]25:03 I think that concludes our information exchange portion, which brings us to our town manager report portion of our agenda. Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. I'd like to lead off by saying that Zoom is a terrible platform, and we've been having trouble all meeting, if you can't tell. So our apologies to people out there, we have been able to get them back on, I know we have a couple people that want to do public comments as soon as I'm done here, so you are up and running, everyone in the audience, we will have you in a moment, and we apologize for the inconvenience. I'd like to announce that Gail Moody, who's one of our, our counterclerks here in the Finance Department, is taking a promotion to a position in the Finance Department of Accounting Assistant. It was a position that was vacated when Todd Reynolds left here about six months ago at the Town Hall, so I just want to say congrats to, to Gail, and I know that she's starting on-the-job training with our Finance Director this week, so a lot of you probably know her, is, you know, the first face that you see when you come into the building, so she'll be much less front counter and much more back office in the near future, but by all means, stop in and say hi if you can. Want to give you an update on the mask face-covering ordinance, in terms of enforcement, compliance, what's happened in the past two weeks, just an update to the council. We've gotten three concerns, three reports, complaints, one complaint received by somebody who believed the ordinance was being overzealously enforced by a business owner, and two complaints regarding people not wearing masks in the, in a public building that was forwarded either to my office or to the Police Department, so relatively non-contemptious so far, in terms of what's on the ground. So just thought you guys would appreciate those statistics.
How would they resolve?
Well, one, didn't have any municipal, the fact of whether something being overzealously enforced not by a private business owner, there was no part for the town to play in that, that was a private business decision. The other two were at the very first two days of the ordinance, and it was done through education, through a visit, actually, it was a private conversation between the business owner and our police chief, who are well acquainted, to update them on what the requirements are, and we actually got the update the next day when we followed up on it, that nope, we knew, it just had went into effect the day before, and we were just getting our feet underneath us, and we said, awesome, thank you. So no, no enforcement action taken, great help from the business community on both of those, so that's that. And I also want to update the council, we've got three real estate, pending real estate matters that aren't on the agenda, but I want to let you know they are all in progress. Our attorney, our real estate attorney specifically, is working with Main Water Company's attorney regarding some of the questions about the water tanks that was brought up at the last meeting. They are working with this, the attorney for the Cole-Français on the Soul School property. You know, they had conversations earlier this week, and they're, they've got a few back-and-forths that they're working on, and working with Chip would be interesting in this one, I hope, directly with Verizon's representative on contracts for the water tanks pending. We jump-started it like your suggestion was, so the attorney's working directly with them later this week to give feedback, so just, nothing we need to take action on tonight, but just letting you know all three of those are still in the hopper, and that they're getting worked on behind the scenes. I hope two of those three might be on your next agenda, but possibly one of those three. Definitely not all three, because Main Water Company's attorney has told us they're not available to work on it until next week, so that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And to kind of decrypt some of that, one of those items relates to people who may be having trouble with their coverage, mostly in the north end of town, north of Alabamian. One of those items should help resolve that for many people, so we're anxiously awaiting that one, so glad to see progress on that.
The, the first part of that is getting the lease agreement, the rest of it is building it, so it becomes...
Yeah, there's a few steps...
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a little longer than instantaneous, but...
I wanted to give a glimmer of optimism, hopefully, it's coming, hopefully.
Six-month, six-month...
Six-month window, probably, right?
Yep, six, maybe might be able to push it a little sooner than that, but it could be six months to a year. six months to a year, just...
Um, all right. That concludes our Town Manager's Report, unless anybody else has questions for the Manager, which brings us to our Sixth Order of Business, which is our public comment period, which I'll introduce by saying thank you to all the people who are here, and all the people who are online. Um, sometimes we are talking to an empty room, and it's refreshing to see that, um, what we do is of interest to people, so thank you all for, for coming out. Uh, sometimes you agree with us, sometimes you don't, but this is your chance to, to tell us what you think. Um, keep your comments to things that are not on the agenda. If there's something on the agenda, there'll be an option to talk about it when that item comes up, but if you have something that you wanna talk about that's not on the agenda, this is the time to do it. Um, everybody, we like to keep everybody's comments to three minutes or less, so we've got a clock up on the wall that will turn on. And I think we've got some people online that also wanna participate, so what I propose we do is kinda hear from everybody in the room first, and then once we're done with the folks in the room, we'll go and see if there's anybody online who, uh, who wants to participate.
We do have one person remotely that would like to comment, they've already contacted me, so.
Okay, so we have at least one?
Yep.
Yep. All right, so who wants to go first? Uh, step up to the podium, tell us who you are, and now what you wanna talk about. Got a roomful of people, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Petriello.
I slid up fast enough, so I guess it's me.
Thank you for being brave.
I didn't wanna make anybody feel uncomfortable going first, so. Um, so, um, first, members of the council, thanks so much for all the hard work that you do. I know a lot of you guys are here volunteering your time, and I appreciate it, and I know a lot of other people do too. I know most of you. Some of you I don't, and some of you I know better than others, but, um, I've come to appreciate all of you. So, um, let me just get right into it. Uh, first, I think that this mandate should be removed. Um, strongly against it for many reasons, and I'm here to ask that you revote today, um, permitted in your council rules in Section Thirty-seven. Um, you can, it's called a motion to reconsider, I'm sure you all know your rules. Um, and anybody who voted on the prevailing side can reconsider and overturn it, and it's just a vote. If you vote the same way, that's fine. Um, but let me just talk about some of the reasons why I think it should be removed. Um, but before I get to that, let's throw out some of these silly comparisons that have been thrown around a lot lately, um, between a mask mandate and perhaps wearing clothes, the no shirt, no shoes, no service, this is nonsense, it has nothing, there's no comparison between walking around nude or masking, it's just not something to be compared to. Using that comparison shows ignorance. Um, and let's also just dispense with the speed limit. We know that there's speed limits. Speed limits and masking are not the same thing. Every good Maynor knows, on Route Twenty-seven, where the speed limit's fifty or fifty-five, you don't go fifty or fifty-five around the corner, because that would be dangerous. So you slow down, you might slow down to thirty-five, otherwise you're taking a chance, right? So you don't do that, you don't speed like that. So, let's get into some details on why I think your duty bound to overturn this vote. This mask mandate is ineffective. Let's go back to the information laid out by Midcoast, most popular masking would be the surgical paper mask, or perhaps cloth. Um, admittedly by this very council here, this mandate has been called the right thing to do, a statement and a gesture. That is ineffective as well. Um, you've also claimed to hear what we have to say, and that we've been heard, and that's great, but tonight, we're gonna ask that you do a little bit more, that you listen to us, and you act upon what all these people came here to say. And I say, no, I don't just speak for myself, too, there are more people that are not here that feel the same way I do, so we're gonna ask that you act tonight. Um, and lead your town in some common sense, instead of following Portland and Brunswick in punitive mandates against the people that you represent and the people that elected you. So the surgical masks, as claimed by Midcoast, um, are effective for twenty-five minutes, if both parties wear their surgical mask the entire time. Take this into account, the average grocery store experience is forty-three minutes. The average retail store experience is fifty-four minutes, and the average restaurant experience is ninety minutes, and also bear in mind, only half of the people are, uh, are wearing a mask in that setting. The, the employees are the only one wearing it, everybody else takes theirs off. So these are just a couple of situations where this mandate's ineffective. With a twenty-five-minute window for viral, viral load, you've already crossed the threshold. And I know that my time's running out, but...
Move we extend?
Yes, I'd like you to make him a, like you to extend it.
A move we extend, Mr. Petriello's, by three minutes.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. So these are just a couple of situations where the mandate is ineffective. Now, consider also, in these settings, how many times people move, touch, pull their mask out to get a breath of air, or take their mask down at the restaurant? You know, I, I just think that those things are all worth mentioning. Um, and this is, this is important. This situation, this COVID situation, mask mandate, this is not a one-size-fits-all solution, it's not a one-size-fits-all problem, you know? So what's good for a public medical, a public medical setting, might not be good for the retail private business sector. You know, bear in mind, these are private businesses, too, that you've made this decision about. These aren't public businesses. I understand that they're public spaces, but these are privately-owned businesses. And what's good for, for the, uh, public schools and the Public Works Department, might not be good for every private resident in this town. So the council has a duty to act in, in consideration of my detailed evidence regarding this ineffective nature of this mandate, as well as support the private residents and businesses to make decisions regarding their own mandates, their own mask mandates, and their ability to make that decision. So I'm making a request that the council make an immediate mo, uh, motion to reconsider, revote now, and remove this mandate.
Thank you, Dom, thanks for the thoughtful comments, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Dom, if you don't mind, um, has your business seen any change in the last two weeks?
Not, uh, not customer-wise, no. I haven't seen a dip in, um, in business. I have been reached out to several times, um, on Facebook, asking if I would, uh, if I would host a group that, um, and not enforce the mask mandate. Um, I declined, but, um, I lost an employee. The first day that the mandate went into effect, he decided he wasn't gonna come back and work there, because he doesn't wanna wear a mask all day, especially in front of a bunch of people that don't wear masks. So...
Yeah, did you decline because of the mask mandate?
I did. I declined because of the mask mandate, I just didn't think it was in the best interest of anybody to, uh, to intentionally, um, to intentionally go against the mask mandate. There, there's a mandate, you follow the mandate.
I appreciate that sentiment.
Well, thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you again, Dom, appreciate it. Anyone else? Yeah?
Hi, I'm, uh, Josh Olins, I, one thirty-nine South Freeport Road, I don't know if you still do that stuff. I am happily no longer the Chair of the Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board, uh, and, uh, while we are, um, it's so great having, uh, Mandy and Valley as the co-chairs there, so I am now just a mere board member. Um, and I'm not speaking, uh, I didn't know we were talking about the mask mandate, so not about that either. Uh, I just wanted to say that over the years, I've, I have had the pleasure, uh, to support and even lead the FSAB, and even prior to that was the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, if you go back ten years or so. Uh, through some really great projects and endeavors, and, and as proud as we are of the achievements, I really want, I would be remiss if I didn't point out the opportunities that we may have lost, that I feel we have lost, due to the lack of the human power, um, vis-à-vis a sustainability coordinator. Uh, it would be very opportune to move to that these days. We, along with the Town Council, we, meaning FSAB, along with you, the Town Council, have done so many really good things together, but now, as the urgency of climate change, uh, is becoming more evident, it is clear that we have to do more, and we really need to, the support and the guidance of greater minds and greater backing. Uh, it is time to hire a sustainability coordinator. I could list the numerous projects from planning to carbon footprint, transportation, EVs, charging infrastructure, energy production, waste management, and so many more, that we really need to pay attention to, um, and that, uh, it's just often too much for the groups that, the volunteer group that we have. Uh, I've always made the point that these efforts pay for themselves, literally, through grant writing and, um, other missed opportunities, uh, as, as well as, uh, how, how we can make progress towards our climate goals. So I strongly support and hope you will also support, including putting in sustainability coordinator into the future town budget, and, uh, happy to answer any questions if you guys have any. Thanks for being there.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Good evening, I'm Bob Stevens, and I'm a member of Freeport Climate Action Now, and I thank Counselor Pillsbury for reporting on the forum. Before going on, I'd like to second Josh's presentation to the council. Freeport Can and a hundred and fifty people or so that attended the first event are strongly in support of everything the Town Council can do to deal with the climate crisis, and the appointment of, including in the budget, a coordinator is going to be a necessary first step. I think you're going to have to consider climate, uh, almost a line item on the budget as you go forward. You have the great Sustainability Advisory Board, and you have to adequately fund it, but more has to go in. This is a, this is a crisis, this is the point of our future that we worry about. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, second what Josh said, and add our group's, uh, uh, request as well. Also, we'd like to thank them for the plug that they gave for our forum. I think it and inclusion featuring that event in the Town Bulletin did a lot to increase the attendance. And, uh, the groups are starting on dealing with local food, conscious consumerism, equity and social justice, or fairness, housing, energy efficiency, local transportation and carbon impact, solar energy, coordination with municipal and, and state action plans, helping support that, and, uh, a few others. Anyway, we're at work, and we, we thank you for that support. Uh, we also got assistance for that event by, from Tom Herod, your IT guru, he helped make it possible, so thank you very much for that. That's all I intended to come speak about tonight. Having heard of Mr. Petriello address what you adopted as the ordinance, uh, I want to, one, thank him for presenting, uh, one, continuing to comply as we all are, but also some interesting facts. But I also think we need to be aware that, um, a scientific, uh, there's scientific support that masks count. Uh, not all masks are perfect, not all laws are perfect. You're trying to deal with the big picture and protect as many people in town as possible, and I commend you for that, and hope you stay with it.
Thank you, Bob.
Hi, uh, I'm Al Brown from Buck's Naked Barbecue. Um, I, like Dom, I appreciate the fact that you do this on a weekly basis and bi-weekly basis, takes a lot of time, my hat's off to you. Um, I, uh, sent you all an email, I didn't get any responses, but, um, my point that I made in there, I, I just wanted to emphasize, and that's, these are worthless, as reported by the CDC, not me, I mean, we're talking scientific fact, that these are not as good as the, the K-95. K-95 will, will give you much better protection. Um, there was a report out by the CDC, there's been many reports, and I think, that's my point. Um, since the beginning of this pandemic two years ago, we've heard a whole bunch of things that are fact, and if you say something different, you can get kicked off of social media, you can, you know, have, have a, a hard time with a bunch of things, and then to find out that, in fact, they're real. Immunity comes from what? Having the disease? But they said it didn't for a long time, now it does. Um, everybody mask up for two weeks, and we'll see a decline, that didn't work. The Omicron variant was totally different than the first three, and, you know, there was somebody from the CDC that said, um, basically, everybody's gonna get it, or there's a great percentage of people that are gonna get it, because there's no way to stop it. So, I, I kinda supported Dom in, in saying, this has gotta be overturned. It, it's not... My, my misunderstanding of this is, like, if Maine CDC is not mandating it, why did you? And if the reason is not purely that the feeling is that this is a medical device that's gonna save us, then you were wrong. And if you're wrong, if there's any other reason, then that's wrong. If it's because Brunswick did it, or Portland did it, Falmouth might do it next week, why? Because Freeport did it. And, and that's wrong. We've gotta base this on facts, and there's not enough facts to support a mask mandate at this time. If there were, I'd be the first one, I mean, we've gone through everything at the restaurant. I have twenty-seven employees, I used to have fifty. Um, I have twenty-seven employees, twenty of them have gotten the Omicron variant, tested positive, stayed home for the five days, did the mask for five days. It didn't stop other people from getting it. And I, I think that, uh, you know, to look at it logically, the mask mandate isn't gonna do anything to stop additional infections, so why do it?
Al, thanks for coming forward, and, um, I, I wanna ask two things, I guess. You, you mentioned at the beginning about not, um, not believing various statements that come out, and then they change, and I would agree with that, that there's been lots of change. Uh, but then you pointed to the, the Maine CDC, and the Maine CDC has not done what we did here in town, and a number of other communities are doing. If the Maine CDC had issued a request, or, uh, you know, made, made a strong recommendation?
Absolutely, I think that that would have more gravitas, because that's a medical community with, hopefully, a lot of medical experts, I'm, I'm hoping.
Right.
You know, coming out with, with a mandate, that you'd have to take a look at it and say, okay, these people study this stuff. Not that everything they've studied has, or reported...
Right.
Has turned out to be right, but I, I, I don't think you can blame that on anybody, you know what I mean? They're doing the best they can.
Right, there's lots of different variables.
Everybody does the best they can.
I would agree.
And I'm, I'm for that.
Yeah.
But yeah, um, it would have more gravitas if it came from a, you know, a medical community like the Maine CDC, absolutely.
So before, at the last meeting where we voted on this, we had a unsolicited presentation from leadership, leadership at the hospital, you heard that, so...
Yes.
And that was pretty compelling to me.
That is where this mask came from, Midcoast Hospital. This is what they give you when you walk in the door. And there are medical community that knows better, that knows, and, and then, you know, again, you, you listen to the news, you kinda go crazy. Um, but, um, half of the K-95 masks that are in distribution in the United States right now are supposedly fakes. So that's another thing to, you know, whether, again, what you believe from, from reading news from a hundred different places, you really have to pick and choose, and, you know, what sounds smart to me, and what sounds like it could be false. And it's a shame, but everybody's been put into that position a little bit.
Right. Okay, thank you.
One other thing, the CDC, not the CDC, but the doctor said last week, or last time we were here, that what worked for the hospital, and five people got COVID, was wearing an N-95 mask, a face mask or goggles, and gloves.
Absolutely.
And then they said, and that was the only way that people did not catch this.
I, I, that's totally what they're telling you.
We don't have that in our, you say you can wear it, but we don't have it in the ordinance.
And it would never be proposed as something, because there's not enough of those to go around. So, like, the, the federal government's only gonna mandate what they can supply. Right now, they can supply vaccines... Right now, they can supply vaccines, whether or not it has anything to do. Apparently, it doesn't have that much to do with Omicron because everybody's getting it. Like I said, out of 27 employees, 20 of mine have already gotten it. That's a pretty high percentage. We went for a year without anybody testing positive for the other variants, and then boom, it just exploded. Including me. I had to stay home for five days. It was the first five days off I've had in a while. Any other questions? I encourage you to at least think about it and look at it. I mean, a revote would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming forward and the thoughtful comments as well.
At the last meeting, I spoke against the ordinance. And I'm just here to point a couple of additional things. I sent emails to the...
Sir, could you please just remind us of your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jim Hughes and I live in Sparkov, 26 Sparkov Road. Been a resident of Freeport for close to 40 years, more or less. COVID has been one mistake after another on how the pandemic has been handled. We started out with the two-week lockdown to flatten the curve. Well, we're still in the two-week lockdown, two years later. The first way they treated people that were sick was to take their temperature, tell them to go home and drink water and act like you got the flu. Be, you know, get good sleep, good nutrition. There was no pre-hospital protocol. The people were not treated until they were told to go home until you can't breathe. Then come back, we'll put you in the emergency room. It's the first time that there was ever a lockdown of the healthy people. Not the sick people. We've done that before. This was a lockdown of the healthy people. It's the first time that doctors have been told not to prescribe an approved drug. It was hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin. The doctors were told not to prescribe them. The pharmacies were told not to dispense them. Now, in the past, there has never been a command for a doctor not to prescribe something. The doctors were expected to analyze their patient, figure out what the patient needed, and use good judgment and go ahead and help the patient. Everything was pushed to vaccinations. Get vaccinated, get vaccinated. Come to find out, the vaccinations were finally approved for emergency use. They were given an EUA. And the EUA is contingent upon there being no treatment for the disease. If there is a treatment for the disease, then a vaccination cannot be given an EUA. So all of the treatments were suppressed. Well, you might say, why would they do that? That's a good question. Last week, I said, follow the science. I showed you what these masks can do and what they can't do. The other thing I'd like to advise you was, follow the money. Who's getting rich on this whole thing? The pharmaceutical companies are just rolling over in dough. It's quite, it's terrible. Right now, I look at the mask as the primary means of scaring people to get vaccinated. COVID is not to be feared. It's treatable. It's treatable in the pre-hospital setting, and it's treatable in the hospital. As far as the money, where the money's going, Senator Kennedy wrote a book about Fauci. And if you read this book, it's unbelievable. He did the same thing with the AIDS, and now he's doing the same thing with COVID. It's terrible. As far as protocols for pre-hospital and post-hospital treatment, the Frontline COVID-19 Critical Care Alliance, a group of doctors that do this voluntarily, they have a whole protocol for pre-hospital and hospital treatment. There's a two-year-old book here, Rabid Virus Recovery. And one of the authors is a Dr. Zelenko from Yonkers, New York, who has a major practice down there. They've had over 3,000 patients that they treated, and they lost, I think it was like, three people. And those were 90 years old and overweight. I'm sorry.
Your three minutes are coming to a close.
I mean?
Your three minutes have come to a close.
Appreciate that. Appreciate your time. And I appreciate you guys doing all the work and women volunteering to serve on the town committee. Anyways, I would ask if you rescind the mask mandate. In short, if you can't do that, then in two weeks it runs out and expires, let it die.
It does, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing the comments and thank you for sharing them. Anybody else in the room who wants to speak? Go ahead.
How you doing today? My name is Shane Reeves. I am from 11 Rainbow Lane in Freeport. I realize I'm probably a little different than what you're used to, and I know I don't have the mask on. And the reason why I'm here is because of the mask mandate. I run an auto shop in Yarmouth, a couple miles down the road. No mandate. It's about a five-bay garage one directly across from Hannaford's. I'll let you figure out which one that is. So all day long, customers come in. I wear no mask. My team wears no mask. Tons of my customers wear no mask. They come to me because they know they don't have to wear a mask. Some places don't require it. Yarmouth doesn't have a mandate right now. I will tell you, it is affecting the businesses in Freeport because I have chosen to not go grocery shopping at Shaw's because I'm just not going to do it, right? I decided to stick with either driving all the way to Falmouth if I need Shaws, or I go to Hannaford's in Yarmouth. Bow Street, the butchery down there, didn't go there. Went to the ones down the road. People don't tell you that it affects it, but people make that choice, just as the mask should be a personal choice. I think plenty of people have pointed out the ineffectiveness of masks, so I won't go into that. But when you just look at structurally how ridiculous it sounds, that from miles apart, people who intertwine through the community all day long, how many of you travel through the state through the day to towns that have no mandate? You interact with people and then, but when you get to Freeport, if you want to go grocery shopping, put your mask on because that makes sense. I'm 35 years old. I've had COVID. I worked as an essential worker through the entire pandemic while my wife took care of her mother, who was terminally ill with cancer, who passed away in June. I never put her in danger, not once. And then, you know, she was not for the vaccine either. She was tough. She was fearless. But the media scares people. And she didn't have that fear because she knew what her destiny was, right? It was an inoperable cancer in her liver. It was in an artery. So I never put her in danger. She never caught COVID. She died because of her battle with cancer. It was three and a half years long. And then after she passed away, recently, my wife and I got COVID. We tried to fight it for a little bit. I got ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine. I sourced it out of America's frontline doctors out of Florida. My wife and I took it, rebounded like that. What they tell you and what you see, that you do have to follow the money. Because these people are in the pockets of pharmaceutical companies. Most of our politicians have stock in those pharmaceutical companies. That's why they make the decisions that they make. That's why we're also discussing, and it's in the news, about them having to be transparent with their stock because Nancy Pelosi has made millions of dollars on it. She's bought into Pfizer. If you read or listen to the nightly news on ABC, CNN, it's all sponsored by Pfizer. Those clips are out there.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, sir.
Your three minutes have expired.
I appreciate what you guys do. Please reconsider. It just doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, Andrew, I'll start down Route 1. I spoke last time against a mandate. My concern is, just like everybody else that's spoken against it, but I don't understand the metric. How are we going to measure whether it's successful? We've imposed an ordinance that we don't know how to measure. And when are we going to decide that we've achieved our goal? So is Lois going to call up from Brunswick again and say, oh, ollie, ollie, in free, everybody off of the mask? You know? I do believe that there are issues with all the things the previous gentleman just said. I believe, you know, I have not been sick, you know? But there are issues with the treatments. There are issues with the fact that I had a lot of doctors in my family, and I remember them when I was a kid, take this and try it and make sure it works and call me if it doesn't, you know? And they were allowed to treat. And they were allowed to treat to the best of their ability. They weren't hampered by the government to say, you cannot treat. I have friends that have gone to the pharmacy down there and got prescriptions of ivermectin, not through this pharmacy. They have been refused. Now the pharmacy's playing doctor. The state's playing doctor. The state's playing god with their decisions to say, hey, just stay home until you're really sick and then come in. I know one of those issues are. You know, Daryl and I and other people grew up in town. There were four doctors in town. You'd go to Dr. Conates, he'd go to Dr. Chase, you'd go to somebody. You'd sit in the waiting room and they'd deal with you. Now you're supposed to sit home until you're in crisis, and the only place to go is the emergency room or quick care. It's not working. We need to have these early solutions we can have in our homes. We can get access to by doctors that want to prescribe them to us. But I get back to my first point is, how are we going to measure it? What's the metric? And when is it successful? Because I think that's the hardest part. You've imposed an ordinance. You can't justify or you can't measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ochsman. Anyone else here in the room who wants to speak? Anyone wants? I know we got at least one person who I think is still with us who wanted to comment online. See if we can make that happen. Are we good to go? Chee?
We're working on it.
Still working on it? All right. Second call for anybody in the room?
Joyce Feige from Flying Point will be with us momentarily.
I can't promote her.
All right. Must have to do that, huh?
You ready to come in, all right?
All right. So Joyce, if you can hear us...
Looks like she's coming up.
Then you can see if it works.
So I would like to thank the town for doing the Zoom so that those of us that are stuck in our homes can still participate. Can somebody at least tell me if you can hear me? Hello? Peter, can you hear me?
Hey, Joyce. We're having technical difficulties. We'll be with you in three seconds. We want to hear what you got to say. Please, please hang tight.
Okay.
While we're waiting for Joyce, just to use the time, I think somebody had mentioned, but just to remind council and the public as well, we passed this, the mask mandate was an emergency ordinance that we passed one meeting ago. So we're two weeks into it. We set it so it expires after 30 days. So if we don't do anything at our next meeting, it will expire. We can vote to reenact it for any amount of time. But that's sort of where we stand. And if we keep it as an emergency ordinance, we would need five of us to reenact it.
Okay, we should have, we should be able to get Joyce. Joyce, why don't you try giving us your comments right now?
Oh, I see my name, so that must be me. I want to thank the town for doing the Zoom, though. For those of us that are stuck at home, it's nice that we can participate. I'd like to talk a little bit about the ARPA funds. And I am hoping that you're going to take suggestions from the general public on possible expenditures. The pandemic taught us that for our own well-being and protection, not only physically, but our mental well-being, we need to be able to have more outdoor event spaces. So I would like to propose that the town consider building a rectangular gazebo in the park. This would provide an outdoor area to safely do small plays and musicals. It would have a safe place to get families out, and it would also help to promote some tourism. Also be a place where you could have educational programs. You could easily add an outdoor screen, and then we can have movie screenings or different lectures. And this would be right in line with what the survey conducted by the principal group found that the residents would like, and that's better outdoor, family-friendly spaces in our downtown area. And personally, I would love to see some spaces there for a couple of our food trucks. I think having dinner and a movie on the grounds in the park would be a great thing. The second thing I'd like you to consider is that we don't have a good playground that is all-inclusive within our town. We're considering doing a skate park and an indoor recreation center mostly for our older children, kids, young teenagers. But we need something for the younger kids, too, and for the handicapped children. So if we were to build a playground in conjunction with either the skate park or the rec center, we need to make sure that it has some specialized play equipment for wheelchair-bound, et cetera, for handicapped children. But this would give the parents with two or more children the ability to go downtown. One child could go to the rec center or the skate park. One, they could have in the park itself. And the whole family could be in the general vicinity. Two ideas. I hope you'll take them into consideration, and I hope that somehow you will be able to open up a discussion to the general public for use of the ARPA funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Thanks for the comments. We do have some ARPA funds. They do come with some strings attached about what we can spend them on. But we are working on a process to get all the ideas into a bucket to then sort of filter through and see how we want to spend them. Anyone else have comments from the public who hasn't spoken yet in the room or online? I don't think we have anybody online, so. Anybody from the council have anything to address based on the public comments we heard?
No, the only thing I'd like to ask, what's the procedure to make a motion? Or when do we make a motion?
If you want to do it tonight, this, I mean, this is a fine time. We're talking about it. If somebody wants to make a motion to reconsider, it would need a vote of five people to repeal the emergency ordinance?
It has to be made by someone who voted affirmative in the first place.
There's two, there's two things. I think Dominic suggested a motion to reconsider, but the Charter, Section 214 specifies how to repeal emergency ordinances. So I would think either of those would be avenues. But an emergency ordinance may also be repealed by adoption of a repealing ordinance in the same manner specified in this section for adoption of an emergency ordinance. So just it has to be introduced and has to have a majority plus one vote is what's specified in this section.
To repeal it, so to enact it, it has to have five, but to repeal it, it still has to have five?
Same, the same manner it says. So I think you, I think if you made, be it ordered, that ordinance, that the ordinance from last meeting regarding temporary face coverings be repealed and had a deliberation and got a 5-2 or 6-1 or 7-0 vote on it, it would be dead at this, now.
Okay, well, I would like to make that motion.
I'll ask a question first.
Yep.
Can the motion be made by someone who voted in the negative?
Can, thanks. Can the motion be made by someone who voted against it in the first place?
Not to reconsider, but a motion to repeal an emergency ordinance can.
Thanks, Jim.
So that's why I said that there are two kind of avenues you could approach it.
Okay.
So Chip, you want to go ahead and make that motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we repeal this, and I'd like to make the comment that... And I'd like to make the comment that the last time we, when we made this order, we made it as a gesture, which I don't think is right for laws. We made it as a law that we weren't really going to enforce, which is also not a reason to make a law. And I don't think it was really vetted through because we didn't, if you really want to make this work, it's not this mask. It's a very specific mask or better mask and it's more PPE. That's what they use in the, so if the goal is to keep everyone safe, then the ordinance needs to have that particular equipment that makes it safe. And it does none of it. So I would like to make the motion that we repeal this order based on all of that.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Second.
Who was the second?
I think Councilor Egan was the second.
Egan and Fornier both seconded.
Anybody want to, yeah, Councilor Daniele.
I think Mr. Ochsman made a good point about, you know, what's, what's the end game? What are, what are we going for? So I would just like to have a, talk that through a little bit. Like what, what metrics are we, are we as a council looking for right now? And, you know, whether we consider extending or letting it die or changing it tonight? I think it's a good conversation.
I mean, I'm happy to share my personal comments on it. First to comment that I feel like we're all in this together. I don't think this is a council this and public that or some of the council this and some of the council that. This is a pandemic that we're all affected by. No matter what you think of it, it's affecting it. People are dying. 800,000 people have died and more are dying. And we've got a lot of people in the hospital and we're all trying to do the best we can. Science changes. We learn things over time. I think what all the scientists on any side of this discussion are saying is that nothing is binary. Nothing is 100% effective. No medicine ever has been. Masks are a tool. They're one tool of many. I think the guidance is generally get vaccinated if you can, take precautions if you can. Masking is one of the things you can do. The U.S. CDC and the main CDC both say you should wear a mask if you're indoors, among other people, in an area with high or substantial transmission. So to get back to your question, that's one of the things that I'm looking for is are we in an area of high or substantial transmission? Currently we are. If we're no longer in an area of higher substantial transmission, that would definitely affect my opinion on it. And the other thing that I'm looking at personally is, is how it's affecting our healthcare system. So right now I'm looking at, you know, we've got over 90% of our hospital ICU beds are being used by COVID patients. And that concerns me. So if we can do something to bring that number down, then yeah, I'd be happy to reconsider this. So for metrics, that's the kind of stuff I'm looking at. Are masks going to solve the problem? No, they're not. Are N95 masks better than surgical masks? Yeah. Are surgical masks better than cloth masks? Yeah. They each do something. So I'm uncomfortable saying that I want to do nothing. I'm uncomfortable saying that everybody rip your mask off and do anything you want and pretend COVID doesn't exist. And I know that's not what we're saying, but this is, this is, I feel like a good middle ground. I feel like it will have an impact. It might not have the greatest impact that we can possibly have, but I think it has a positive impact. So I'm willing to give it another two weeks and look at those metrics in two weeks and see where we are. That's, that's where I stand.
Okay, so what metrics? I mean, how do you, County Freeport has done this, so yeah, let's keep the masks on, but that's not.
There are three metrics I'm looking at. One is, are, are we, Cumberland County is how they measure it, in an area of higher substantial transmission? What do the ICU beds look like? And there was a third hospital-related metric that I could point to on the CDC page, but I can't remember now. But it's hospital-related, healthcare-related capacity.
I still don't understand how Freeport having the mask mandate is going to stop that. We're already on a downslope. We're at the, I think really at the end of this pandemic. I understand this at the beginning of the pandemic when we don't, don't know anything about it. We, we closed down the country for two weeks. Oh, and it's still got around. We've been wearing masks for two years. It's still got around. So at this point, it's, it's a gesture. That's what it is. It's a gesture. And I understand there, and it's not a question of if you're going to get it, it's a question of when. And so it is going to happen. And I think it's everyone's personal choice to wear a mask. And anytime we do something, we take away that choice, we take a little way, away a little freedom. I think it's incumbent on every business to make that choice for the business. If we're going to do it, then it's in public spaces, it's public space, but it's outdoor space. Because a private business, although it's public people coming in, it is a private, private space. Now we talk about area of high, we look at all of Cumberland County. Well, which part of Cumberland County? Is it Freeport? Is it Yarmouth? Is it, or, I mean, if, if we're doing it and Yarmouth isn't doing it, what, what's the point? And I get, okay, so we do it, Brunswick does it, so we do it. So Portland does it, Brunswick do it, we do it. It's just, it's not effective. And we don't have a way to make it effective. We don't have a way to track if it's effective. There's just no way to do that. Right? You're just telling me that it's Cumberland County? Okay, we're, that's a high area. Why is it a high area? Is it, is it because there were, is it Falmouth? Is it Yarmouth? Is it the whole area? It's just, it's not effective. And I understand that people are afraid of this and I get it. And if you're really that far afraid of it, don't come to town because that's the only way not to get it.
Councilor Fornier, I think you want, had your hand up?
I do think a couple of things have changed since we adopted this. We are seeing a decline, although not as rapid as we always like to see. But there are fewer cases coming into hospitals. Since the last meeting, a couple of my grandkids experienced getting it. And I got tested, did the five-day quarantine. And what I found interesting, we're all out back in school and they still test positive after the five days. So I'm finding that kind of telling me that, you know, maybe it, there's a benefit or whatever to come in to get them back to be socially educated, which is positive. So I, I thought we had, you know, maybe the middle ground, we talked to the businesses last meeting of just a sign that we highly encourage people to wear a mask, but not to have the mandate, not have the penalties or. But, you know, I think we're on the downhill side and, and we've heard people losing employees.
Losing business.
And losing business, you know, so I, you know, I, I hope we can reconsider and, and vote on it.
Thank you.
And honestly, my whole family's had it in the last month, except for me.
Councilor Bradley, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, this, this isn't easy, guys, to hear from you and to have to respond. But I, we, I owe you an explanation of why I am not going to support your motion. Dan said 90% of it for me. I, he did a wonderful job explaining why I'm going to vote against it. Couple of things. For me, it's not a gesture. It's something that I believe, rightly or wrongly, that I can vote to do that will, to some extent, relieve the pressures that are, exist in our healthcare system. It won't solve COVID. It won't keep everybody from getting COVID. Maybe everybody will get COVID. But I believe it will slow it down and it will address that, that problem. So I don't, I don't think it's fair to me to call it a gesture because I don't view it as a gesture. You may, and that, I've heard you, Chip, say that many times. And I, I get it and I respect it, but I don't agree. So I'm going to be voting against it. And I think to stay the course makes sense. We've only got two more weeks to go. That may be a long time for everybody in this room, but it's not a long time for the people who aren't in this room who call me as often as you do show up to these meetings. So you aren't, don't, don't sense that you are the majority of people in this town because you're not. You, you are, and I respect, as I said last time, what you say. And I've considered it carefully and will continue to. But on the other side of this, there are, I don't, I hadn't counted them, but 10 to 20 emails and people who stopped me in the streets and say, "Thank you very much." Because we agree with what your position is. So I hope that, I don't want to duck this. You know, I'm not afraid to explain why I vote this way. And I'm not afraid to be wrong. And I'm not afraid to be disagreed with. But I honestly believe it is something we can do to make this situation better without making it perfect. And I'm going to vote to continue it for the next two weeks.
Councilor Pillsbury?
I'm not going to, you know, lecture, debate any points. I'm going to vote no as well. I agree with what Dan said and what Ed said. And I do just appreciate everyone coming here and speaking their mind. And I respect us doing it in a civil manner. And I'll say that again. And I'll keep saying it because that's the only way we're going to be able to have this discourse and to share ideas and share differences. And, you know, everyone is entitled their opinion and entitled to be part of the process. And I think that's an important thing and we need to keep that going. But that's where I stand on this.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody else? Yeah, Jay?
I'll just say that I, I think we have heard from people who wanted it to go a lot further than it is right now too. And I know that they're not in the room tonight, but I've gotten emails, I've been talked to by people saying, "Why aren't you enforcing this more? Why aren't you pushing people this way?" And so in a way, I do think this is a middle ground solution. And I, you know, I'll echo Dan's comments as well. So I'll leave it at that.
Any other discussion?
Call the question. Can you explain what a yes or a no vote means?
Yeah, sure can. So first, we, you know, we've got an item that's, wasn't on our agenda, but I think there's clear demand that people are interested in talking about it. So I'm happy to consider it unless there's any objection to adding it to the agenda. The motion on the floor is to repeal the emergency ordinance. So a yes vote would repeal the ordinance. A no vote would keep the emergency ordinance in place for another two weeks. And then at our next meeting, we can decide to consider it or we can decide to let it expire.
Doing nothing, I think this is what you said, but doing nothing means the ordinance dies the day after your next meet, or two days after your next meeting. You would need another emergency ordinance passing with the five, at least a 5-2 vote. I believe that's correct, to reinstitute something like this.
At our next meeting.
At the next meeting, yep.
And at this meeting, we need a vote of at least five to repeal it if we choose to do that.
Correct.
Anybody questions about the process? Question's been called, so we have to take a vote. I'll start at the far end with Councilor Pillsbury. Yes to repeal or no to keep?
Nay.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No. So I lost track. Four noes, three yeses?
Right.
So the noes have it, which means we keep the emergency ordinance in place for another two weeks and then we revisit. So thank you again to all the people who shared thoughts. I appreciate that. Thank you to the council for the thoughtful discussion as well. We'll have another opportunity in two weeks to talk about it. And thank you as well. I do want to call out one other thing. Thank you to the business owners who don't agree but have nonetheless complied. I think that shows a gesture of respect, so I appreciate that. Moving on to our consent agenda. So the next item on our agenda is the Seventh Order of Business. Yeah?
I'm a little bit uncertain about what process there is if someone wanted to continue this for another period of time. If, if, if we want to do it as an emergency, we need five votes. But if we wanted to do it as just a regular ordinance, we have time to put that out and have a motion next time, which would just require a majority, a simple majority.
Correct. Yep, so the question is, what's the process to adopt? This is a regular ordinance. You would need to notice it, you need to notice it, hold a public hearing and then 14 days later, or notice it, within 14 days, hold a public hearing and that day you could vote on adopting it.
So the only way to keep, to keep it in place from now until whenever we want to stop it, whoever, you have to have it, continue it as an emergency ordinance. Is that correct?
Yeah, so you're, I think, I think you're saying if you wanted to adopt it permanently as an ordinance?
No, I'm saying if, in order to maintain the continuity of the mask mandate, the only way to do that is, is as an emergency ordinance?
Correct.
And that, that would require the five votes?
Correct. Unless you wanted to go draft up an ordinance and take it up as an item not on the agenda tonight to notice it, to hold a public hearing, next meeting to adopt it as a regular ordinance. You could technically accomplish that in the next, until this meeting adjourns.
Thanks.
Either way, if you want it to be permanent, you got to have a public hearing and solicit newspaper notice, solicit input from the public, all that good jazz.
All right. Anybody opposed to moving on? Our next order of business, item number 32-22, to consider action relative to adopting the February 1st, 2022 consent agenda. Councilor Pillsbury, would you read the, be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the February 1st, 2022 consent agenda be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody wants to remove and discuss separately? We have some donations to accept. We have a resignation from the library board, a new victualer's license, more donations. And that's, that's all we've got. Councilor Pillsbury, yes?
Can I just ask a question, since I'm new to this? Why do we have to approve every individual donation?
Yeah, you have to vote to accept money that's not, if you don't include it in the budget, you've got to take a vote to accept anything outside of the budget process. That's, that's the intent why they're on here.
Great, thank you.
You can do it all at once. You could hold it till the end of the year. If you want to do it in a different fashion, we could.
But if we, can the money be spent until it's been approved?
It cannot. It's going to be received. It also has to be appropriated too throughout the year. So, yeah, you get those two votes that have to happen.
Councilor Fornier?
I like his thought. Since we endorse a letter to go out for the library by our rescue every year, it was passed by the council many years ago. Why could that not be a mechanism to have that come in and then it has to be appropriated when we spend it?
No, I think that.
You could, you could do it that way. I think, I'm going to go out, former counselors that have served on the council before when this process was started can feel free to butt in and tell me if they, if, if I'm saying something wrong. I think that this was started and was done this way as a recognition of the individual people, just as a thank you. You know, if somebody says, "I want to donate," I mean, for 20 bucks, 50 bucks, $25, whatever, that's, that's not, doesn't rise to the concern of public interest, public budgeting that has to be on the agenda. It's like if somebody's like, "I'll give you a $5,000 donation to buy a XYZ." That's something that we, you know, there's a reasonable expectation the public would know about it. It would be like, "Oh, the council's accepting $5,000 to do this thing they never, that they never anticipated doing." There may be some public policy benefit to having that, that discussion. Where that limit is, the law is, you know, there is no limit in the law. But there's a common sense limit between what, you know, does somebody in the audience need to know? We're accepting $25. Does that really mean anything? Probably not because you know what it's going to be spent on, so. But I think that these small donations were accepted just as a recognition initially.
There's a certain regularity to identifying and accepting things and that, and that skims any sense that there's any, any benefit or being conferred by anybody in town on somebody who's donating to a public use. It just says it's part of the public process. The town council reviewed it. It's a regular action. And I think it's required by the statute, I mean, the ordinance somewhere. But it doesn't matter. I think it makes sense to, to set, to put them all together. And I think it's amazing what they've given.
I mean, your point is good for sunshine. I don't see what it hurts. You know, you've got a major donation here to the library from a corporate citizen in town. Maybe somebody cares about that. Maybe somebody wants to know that L.L. Bean's donating and maybe somebody, I mean, that's good public sunshine information to be out there, I think.
I'll point out that, tonight aside, it doesn't take any extra time because we just put it in the consent agenda, which we wind up approving, or, you know, approving or discussing anyway. It usually as a whole, but. Councilor Daniele?
I should have asked this before, but what's the Fidelity charitable fund? Last page.
Yeah. That's a good question. Do we have any information? Keep, keep going.
As I said, I should have asked this before.
Thanks for the gotcha. Appreciate it. Um, donation to the Fidelity. Ms. Town Clark, other than just getting the notification, you don't know what that is, do you?
Second item on the, on the last page. The fifth item on the last page. Second item on the last page, the flip item on the last page.
So, does Freeport have individual funds within itself?
I know there are funds.
You know what I mean? It's like there are these little buckets of money that can only be spent on certain things, I assume, and...
Heating Assistance Fund that can only be spent on...
I understand that one.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know what this one is for.
Scholarship funds, cemetery funds, there's a lot of trust funds. I'll do a little bit of research on that, and I've actually never seen the one afterwards either, the Jewish Community Foundation Ben Paul Charitable Fund. I've not seen that in my 10 years here, either of those two, so I'll get some more information on that. Chris, you don't have any backup information just off the top of your head, right?
Okay.
I thought you'd just thrown a lifeline there. Maybe you had something, so. Do you want to take those out until I can do research? It would make sense for everything we just talked about, that if we don't know what it is, we get you the information. It'd be kind of hypocritical for me to tell you, "Yeah, just accept it."
So, does someone want to move to take those off the consent agenda?
Sure. I move to take out item 4122 and 4222 from the consent agenda and table it for next...
Till next meeting?
Meeting.
Second. All right. I don't think this one requires a lot of discussion further than what we had. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay. So, any other discussion on the consent agenda without those two items? So, all in favor of adopting the consent agenda as amended?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our consent agenda has been unanimously adopted.
Sorry for the detour.
No, it's good. It wound up being a good discussion.
Well, I think you just saw, to answer your question, why do we do this? Because of Councilor Daniele's motion. Self-explaining.
All right. Our next agenda item is item number 33-22 regarding the budget schedule for fiscal year 2023. Council Fornery, would you like to read the Be It Ordered?
Certainly. Be it ordered that the FY '23 budget schedule be adopted. Second.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, would you like to add any comments on the budget schedule and what we're adopting tonight?
Yep. Nope, this is pretty standard. Just for the really high level, there's kind of two parts to the budget process. There's the capital program, which is the five-year, the program of capital budgets essentially. That is different than our capital budget for next year, which is considered in the second half, which is the budget discussion. So, there's the capital planning discussion, which happens for the next two months, essentially starting March 1st to the end of April. So, those two months are capital planning, capital program review. And then, starting April, May 1st, sorry, May and June are your operating budget and your capital budget deliberations and adoptions. So, there's kind of two, two-month periods for the next four months, up to the end of the fiscal year. June, the end of June is when you have a deadline for adopting a budget. So, we have a target date on here of June 21st, but in reality, you've got until the 30, 30, 31, 30, June 30th to adopt a final budget. Like, if you needed to have a special meeting or add additional meetings or things like that, that would go into effect on July 1.
So, is this, is that cutting it a little close? Because what if we got to the 21st and there was an issue, we wouldn't be able to set another meeting, would we?
Sure. Yeah, you could have, you could have, call an emergency meeting that night. You could notice it. You could call it the week before. Yep. Yeah, we'd have the availability. And it's, I mean, I guess cutting it close is a personal qualitative judgment, but the timeline is set in the charter. You start it 60 days prior. I have to give you a budget for consideration, and then you start considering 60 days prior to the expiration of the fiscal year. So, that timeline is set by our charter, which is, I do want to point out, a lot later than most communities. Most communities are adopting their annual budgets, you know, 90 days, 60 days before, sometimes 30 days before the fiscal year. For some reason, Freeport, our charter says, as of the last day of the fiscal year, you have to have next fiscal year's budget adopted. It's good, because it gives us the most accurate year-to-date data to look at as we're going through it. You know, you can see essentially 11/12s. You know, you can have all, up to June 1st, really, you can have financials done to see what your actuals are for the year before, if you want to, you know, really dive into the data. So, I like it for that reason. The budget, when we, when we transmit the budget, we've got 10 months of this fiscal year to go back and analyze, as opposed to some municipalities that start, you know, January 1, that only have six months of the data to really look at for performance. So, I like it for that reason. I think it's a little bit of an odd duck in the fact that it comes so late in the fiscal year, the way we have it set up, but there's benefits and drawbacks.
Yeah. So, I mean, my only concern is that, does that allow you enough time to implement the budget within those nine days? Specifically, I'm, well, specifically, I'm thinking about, you know, what if you wanted to enact a hiring on, you know, June 1? I mean, that's, July 1, that's the first day. You're never going to be able to do that.
Oh, sure. Yeah. We, I mean, we've got enough fund balance to carry over, and none of it's going to be an issue. If we were really tight on fund balance, it would absolutely be, like, from a cash flow perspective, there's enough of a, there's enough of a float there. The only thing that would be a problem is if there was a substantial reduction to the budget. Like, you know, you voted to eliminate the, I won't even say it out loud, but, you know, the blank department. That would be a scramble if the council decided on, you know, June 28th that we want to eliminate the blank department for the upcoming fiscal year. I might have trouble getting that done in two days. You know, I'm not saying anything. I'm not using any hypotheticals, because somebody will be like, "Oh, my God, you're eliminating my department."
I mean, I think, but on the flip side of that, though, is if there is a position or a set of positions that we want to move quickly on, and we've all identified that, enacting the budget on the 21st doesn't allow us to be able to move on July 1, if that is a priority, right?
Hire somebody earlier.
Yeah, we would hire contingent on, we could hire them on May 1st and say it's contingent on the funding happening. You know, in their offer letter, would say, "Based on the council approving the budget on, you know, by July 1." So, it may affect somebody being willing to take a position. You're absolutely correct. Somebody might not be willing to sit there for a month and wait to see if you guys vote yes or no on something, but, um, that's, it's pretty common in municipal world. Even in a large city budget, that's to be expected, so.
Council Egan?
Matt, I'll just say, I've done this the last five years and found the timing actually to be more than adequate to implement what we have to do. Most of the back and forth and input is on the capital budget, not the operating budget. This year, there may be a little bit more of a balancing on those two, because we're, we are going to, I think we are going to be talking about a couple of positions, which will be adding to the operating budget of the town. But we get a lot of input from community groups, as well as the departments on the capital budget, and so there's probably five meetings on the capital budget before that is in place. And all that time, we're also getting information on where the operating budget is. So, it may seem like we're voting on it at the last minute, but I can assure you, we have lots of advance notice to have conversations about it. And by the time we get to those votes, at least it's been my experience, that there's been lots of dialogue and lots of input. So, I think the schedule works pretty well.
So, not to get too municipal nerd on this, but there's a lot of municipalities in Maine and New England that operate in arrears, that spend in advance of, I guess, the billing arrears for their spending. Most town meeting towns operate, that operate on a calendar year, and their town meeting is sometime in the spring, operate for the first three months. I still haven't figured out, worked in one of those towns before. I still don't know how it's legal or a good idea from a legislative perspective, but you run three months of budget, hoping that your town meeting's going to approve it. If the town meeting says, "I zero the police department, or the town clerk's department, or the town manager's department," you've already spent three months. I don't even know what you would do. But that happens, too, and we're lucky enough with the chartered form of government, with the way we're in the fiscal year, and we adopt, starting on the 1st of July, that we actually, you're right, it's tight, and there's a little bit of, there could be some hypothetical problems that could happen in there, but we don't at least have the problem that 60, 70% of Maine municipalities have, which is, it almost seems like you're taking the power away from voters to vote on the budget if you're spending it before they have the actual appropriation. So, that's just my municipal nerd two cents there.
Any other discussion on adopting the budget schedule? Have we had somebody read this yet?
I did. I read it.
Thank you. I'm sorry. All right. Seeing other discussion, all in favor of adopting the budget schedule?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's another unanimous adoption, which brings us to item 34-22 regarding our schedule, changes to our schedule. Counselor Lawrence, would you read the Be It Ordered, please?
Be it ordered that the town council's schedule be amended to designate four additional Workshops.
Be it ordered that the town council's schedule be amended to designate four additional workshop dates on March 22nd, March 29th, April 12th, and May 24th.
Second. Sorry. Thank you, Council Daniele. So, you should have a new schedule with some dates in red, and I apologize for taking up every Tuesday of yours for the entire spring, but I just enjoy your company that much. The, to give a little explanation, the workshop on March 22nd is one of the new ones. That was just an oversight. Every year, we usually have three workshops to deal with our boards and committees, so we do about 20 minutes for each board and committee, and by the time we get through all of them, it takes up three workshops to do that. So, we had talked about it. It just didn't make it onto the printed schedule last time, so that's just a correction. The next two, March 29th and April 12th, are the two that we did talk about here at the council, which is so that we can have our chance to kind of have our say about the downtown vision and any plans that come out of it, and any interactions with the principal group, and kind of make sure we leave enough time for that. And we also said we can add workshops to that if we feel like those two aren't enough, but that's, that was our starting point. And then, the other one is May 24th, which I think I mentioned as well at the last meeting, which is a workshop primarily with FEDC, and one of the items on that I expect to be just to synchronize, we're going to, probably going to have a new executive director by the end of FEDC. So, it's just a synchronization to say, what are the goals and objectives of FEDC, and are they aligned with the council goals? Since they're not a town department, so we have an opportunity to do that. This year in particular, my hunch is the downtown vision may come up with a series of actions and plans and things that we might need help adopting, and we may ask FEDC for help with that, so this would be a good chance for us to really talk about the implementation of the plan. So, that's what May 24th is. And we did mention that, now that we've just adopted our budget schedule, there may be some items there where we say, "Hey, we've got a great idea for downtown, but we need some money to do it." So, there may be a chance that we change or tweak the budget at that somewhat late stage, but just to set expectations that that might happen. So, that's why the changes are there. Any questions? All right. All in favor of adopting the new schedule?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that unanimous adoption. And that concludes our action items for the agenda, and we're on to other business. And we have three items for other business. The first of which I'll talk about. So, this is a discussion regarding Freeport following the state's lead in divesting fossil fuel holdings, as specified in LD99, which says, the state language says, "The treasurer of state may not invest in any prime commercial paper or corporate bonds issued by a fossil fuel company." And there's a lengthy law that goes along with that, that was passed and signed last spring by the legislature and the governor. So, a little bit of background, Maine was the first state to do that on a legislative basis, so to require it by law, as opposed to just set it as a policy. Going back further, in 2012, I think it was, Unity College, also here in Maine, was the first college or university to adopt that as a policy, to divest themselves of fossil fuel holdings. Since then, there have been 1,485 institutions that have divested over $39 trillion from fossil fuel holdings. So, I thought it would be interesting for us to take a look at whether or not we wanted to do that. I'm not under any illusions that the amount of money that we're talking about from the town of Freeport is going to raise any eyebrows at any fossil fuel companies, but I think when you combine it with the other 1,485 institutions, it makes a pretty big statement as a whole, and I feel like it does put a little bit of weight behind our intentions in implementing a climate action plan. So, it's one of those things that we can do as a town. So, what's before us tonight is basically, is there an appetite to look into this, to do some research, and come back with a proposed policy that we can then adopt? So, it's not about adopting a policy tonight. It's just to kind of take everyone's temperature and see what you think about whether or not this is worth looking into. So, with that, anybody have any questions? Council Pilsbury?
I'm supportive of it. I mean, if this is the direction we're moving, I think it seems counterproductive to be using town funds to invest in fossil fuels.
Council Bradley?
How much money is it, and who invests it for us?
So, we have a paid investment manager, if you'll figure to back me up on the facts, here we have a paid investment manager who invests our reserve balances.
You're doing great.
So far, all right, and there's...
Keep going.
Thanks. There are state rules about what we're allowed to invest in, and they're basically very conservative investments, so we're not doing anything exotic. So, we don't make those decisions. We just set the policy for the investment managers to say, "This is what you, we think you should invest our money in."
And the current, the current manager is Bangor Savings Bank Wealth Management Division, so we selected them several years ago by an RFP process. They've been doing it probably for eight years for us. Jessica Malloy has identified that that is a kind of a target in the next year or two to re-RFP that, just, we like to keep it fresh, but they, you know, they get some, some thousandths on all of the interest in the trades and things like that. We made that decision all those years ago based on competitive, you know, quotes. I want to say like 20 or 30 basis points per year or something like, they don't make, it's a lot of money, so they make money off it.
The balance is eight to 10 million, isn't it, when you add up all of the reserve accounts?
That sounds right. I was going to say six to seven, but it's, I think that there's stuff in there that I'm probably not thinking of off the top of my head. Yes.
Somewhere in that range.
It's substantial.
And we have no idea how much of that is in fossil fuel.
I...
That's part of the research that I've proposed.
We have to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, a lot of it is, a lot of it is, you know, really basic. They don't do anything crazy. A lot of it's tied to index funds, so that leads me to think that the 25% in some of those funds that is invested in equities, a chunk of it would be in fossil fuels, because it, you know, it manages, it mirrors the S&amp;P and the Dow, so, you know, a lot of those top conglomerates are fossil fuel companies, so they're in there. It's certainly in our investments, and it's proportional to the stock market as a whole. We don't target fossil fuels, but we also don't avoid them.
Council Egan?
I think certainly the research will help, and I think we should pursue the discussion. There's two sides to that, at least in my mind, that we make decisions about investment of our reserve accounts, which ultimately is a fiduciary decision, and, you know, on one side of that coin is, why would we choose an investment strategy that's not going to maximize our opportunity to get return? That's on one side. On the other side is, are we aligning our investment strategies with a value that we say we have in terms of recognition of climate change, and whether or not we should be investing and participating in companies that are contributing to climate impacts, negative climate impacts? So, there are two sides of it, and I think it's worth discussing. Ultimately, from my perspective, I think it'll end up being a relatively easy decision, because I think our conservative investment strategy is such that it's not going to harm us from a fiduciary perspective in terms of a return to make that decision. So, it's, I don't think it's going to end up being a big swing either way, and if we're not, if we're not taking a fiduciary hit, then I think that makes the decision a whole lot easier. And given what I've experienced here within terms of our investment strategy and how conservative it is, I don't think we're going to be missing out on anything. But that's why I think we want to have a little bit of research and data brought back to us next time.
Council Fornery?
I think we take more beneficial actions on other positions other than this, and I'm not sure that I would have a lot of interest in this. I think we can go to CAG and do environmental issues we have here. We're talking about sustainability position. To me, those are, there's a meat on the bone there. This, I think, is a kind of feel-good thing, to be quite honest with you. The state did, and so I don't like to spend a lot of wheels on that.
Council Pilsbury?
Just to add to John's point, the other thing to consider is, there is ultimately down the road a cost to the town for inaction on climate change. I mean, we're going to see a real dollar cost to flooding, to additional snowstorms. I mean, there's just, it's just an unavoidable fact, so I think, you know, we should be mindful of that as well.
Council Lawrence?
Aren't a lot of fossil fuel companies now...
Aren't a lot of fossil fuel companies now transitioning or doing a lot of research in electric companies?
Yeah, one of the challenging things that, that I was trying to figure out was how, how do you define a fossil fuel company, right? If, if you've got a lot of oil and gas exploration, but you're also investing in a lot of wind power and solar power, are you a fossil fuel company or are you a renewable fuel company? Obviously, 1,500 other institutions have wrestled with this before, and they, they've come to, to ways to figure it out. And I don't have the definitions handy, but there are definitions that the state has used that we can borrow, or any of these other institutions have used that we can borrow. But a lot of it, I think, is focusing on the top, the people who own the carbon resources in the ground and saying that if we divest from those companies, then there's less financial incentive to extract those resources from the ground. So it's complicated, it's not an, an easy kind of a thing where you take a dollar out and there's a dollar less spent on fossil fuels. So there are a lot of moving parts, but in, in general, I, I think the, the, the impact is there. And I think when you add it up and aggregate, I think it does make a difference. We're not, just to be clear, we're not proposing to spend any money on this, it's more a question of, of our investments, what do we invest them in? It's not a foregone conclusion that we'll take a lower return when we do this. There are different funds, some of the funds that are global sustainable funds have exceeded the index funds, some have not, some have underperformed. So it's like trying to predict, is the tech sector gonna do well next year, is the fossil fuel sector gonna do well next year? We, we just don't know, is my, my guess, but like I said, I'm not the expert. I'm hoping that we can get some expert testimony and bring it back and, and make a call. Gotcha.
So I'm, I'm not spending a lot of time on this, I'm not, because it's, it's not investing, it's investing in the company, but that's for them to build more stuff, which even if we don't invest in them, they're gonna get it because they're gonna get, probably the, they're selling at the pump. But I thought this problem was already gonna be taken care of in 30 years, at least that was, was when I was a kid, 40 years ago. Yeah, I guess it's 40 years ago. We were running out of oil, it was gonna be done in 30 years, so I, at some point, we're running out, right? So it's gonna take care of itself.
Well, yeah, I mean, counterargument is if, if we take it out and burn it all in the next 20, 30 years, we're in much worse shape than if we do that over 1,000 years.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying that I was, when I was a kid, we're all worried about oil running out in 30 years, and now we're 40 years into that, so...
Yeah, yeah, and how much do we invest in exploring, find new resources?
Jake? Just as part of the academic discussion, if we invest in ExxonMobil as a shareholder and we take that money out, it doesn't actually give them less money, it's just moving the stock price down a little bit.
Maybe.
So is there, you know, like, is there, in the state's rules or in other communities' rules, I think this is an interesting point to, to look into, is, does that reduce the amount at all? Like, you know, is there a thing, like, I agree, like, we shouldn't invest maybe in ExxonMobil new bond issues, but if the bond is already issued, is it change anything? Who gets the return from that or not? Because no money goes directly to ExxonMobil, as an example. So just, I think it's an interesting academic question.
Yep, yeah, yeah, and we could talk for an hour about it.
Right.
And I'd be happy to do so over, over coffee or something, but, yeah. But I, I guess tonight, the question is like, should, should we look into it? Should we do more research? Should we, should we bring it back?
I think that Counsel Bradley made the point that we should look into our investment strategy and everything, so I think this is a great piece to that bigger chunk, and I would, you know, say go forward with that for sure.
Yep. I'm getting some nods, yeah?
As a, yeah, as a whole, I think that we need to...
As a whole, yeah.
As a whole, we need to look at our investment strategy. As far as this, yeah.
Maybe, okay, okay. All right, so we'll do some research and we'll bring it back and, and have a longer discussion if we need to. Okay, thank you for that. We've got two more items. One is a discussion regarding the codes enforcement and planning department's application review and permitting process. So I, I think this is a general discussion about what does it look like to do permitting in town, what are the experiences that businesses and residents have when they come to town and try and primarily build things or change the way land is used? And is there anything we can do to improve that? And that's sort of the, the context for it. And I think we have our town planner and our town code enforcement officer here to help us figure this out.
I wanted to do a little bit on, I've asked to start the conversation, I've asked Caroline and Nick to put together some examples. First of all, to put a sheet up on the screen that's gonna show you everything that we do for reviews, because my head spins when I see it and I work with it every day. Those of you that don't, I think will be kind of shocked with the amount of actual reviewing and regulation that we do. And this isn't done to, this isn't done to try to drive home any point, although there are a lot of points to be made from it. It's legitimate things that have been adopted over the years that, when taken in whole, is a stack of things for somebody to come into town. And this is not in any way unique to Freeport, this is very, our regulatory structure is very similar to similarly sized municipalities. We have some things that others don't, other municipalities have some things that we don't. And, you know, but in the area, this isn't out of the norm. But I want to show you that first, and then second, I've asked Caroline to do a couple scenarios of businesses, you know, if somebody wanted to open up an XYZ scenario, what would that involve from a timeline perspective and from a review perspective? Just so you can get a feeling for, like, hey, I want to open this business, wow, that's six months, that's what it looks like, this is why, this is what the timeline looks like. Is that acceptable? Do we want to do something about that? That's a discussion for us to have, I think.
So it's very apropos that we're doing this, because I was talking to a friend of mine two days ago, and there was a franchise that tried to come into this town, and they didn't because they said the town was too hard to be, to work with, and they're building and tops them. And I was like, what? Okay. So I won't tell you what that was, but it's one that's kind of near and dear to my heart.
No, not a big bag.
Tom, do you need the controller?
They're already here in town.
Know what? Is it because that click share thing is running over here?
No, because we changed it.
It's right there. There's clicks here.
Yep.
All right, so I put together a little PowerPoint of the different types of reviews that we have, like in that video, it's like, right?
There's so many, we can't even see them, Caroline.
There are so many, you can't...
Could you zoom in?
Yes.
It's showing up good on the Zoom feed and on the cable feed, so that's good, Caroline.
Okay, so I'll just kind of walk through, walk through, column by column. So what do we do all day in planning codes? We have lots of ordinances, if you've ever been on the town's website, take a link, click on the ordinance page if you haven't, I think we're up to 60-something. Probably the biggest is the zoning ordinance, which I think is up to like 275 pages.
Tom's gonna want you to use a microphone here.
She's got one, put it down.
Yep, it's on.
Okay, thanks.
So I broke it down by, depending on the different kinds of ordinances that we're at. So in the planning department, we typically deal with projects that are gonna come before one of our boards, so they would come before the board for some kind of use, whether it be a site plan, which is some kind of business, a subdivision.
Or they may come for a design review, which we've talked about, you know, in the downtown area for, you know, your building looking a certain way. Chip, you've gone through it.
I have.
You can speak firsthand. So we have three levels of board review that we staff. Well, the first is staff approval, that doesn't go to the board, that's what the town planner can sign off on. We have a staff review board, which is made up of five department heads, smaller projects. We still follow our notification process, we post agendas, we do staff reports, we do findings, notice of decision and motions and all that. Daryl can give you some insight. And then we have bigger projects, which go to the project review board, which is a board of seven appointed by you, and that will be inviting you to a workshop in, in March on a Wednesday. The, so we, here you have a little description of what they do, site plan, subdivision, design review, and then we also have the overlay district, which we've talked a little about, which they issue design review certificates for. So what goes on behind the scenes when, oop, sorry. There we go. So what goes on behind the scenes when somebody brings an application? It doesn't just sit there, it gets circulated and it gets reviewed. So the first thing we do is circulate it internally, we circulate it to different department heads, fire chief, police chief, planning codes, engineering, recycling, to all take a look at it and see what sticks out before we bring them to the board. And then secondly, anybody coming to our board could have a series of permits that would be required from different outside agencies beyond the town of Freeport. They could trigger permits from Maine DEP, require sign-offs from water and sewer to show that they can handle the connections, or they could need permits from the Maine Department of Transportation. So that's just to get through step one, which is the planning process. Once they go through the board process, get whatever approvals they need, they then go to code enforcement and get permits from codes. One of the big differences between the two, while the planning department does a lot with the board, and code enforcement, a lot of it comes down to the code enforcement officer, who also staffs the Board of Appeals, but luckily, we don't have that much going to Board of Appeals. So these are the type of reviews that come under the purview of code enforcement, building, electrical, plumbing, shoreline zoning, flood plain, peddlers on private property, also known as hot dog carts in Freeport, sign permits, directional signs, which are those blue and white signs that say, we'll snack farm this way, design certificates, which is, we talked about, sometimes goes under project review, sometimes goes under the code officer, depending on the project, temporary activity permits, which we talked about, and a well permit. Again, I, the outside agency, there could be overlap because we could see different kinds of businesses, some could have to go to the board. If it's, you know, a retail business going into a new retail business, they could just maybe need a permit from Nick if they're doing interior improvements. So this list is pretty much the same with the exception, you'll notice the addition that a lot of times stuff does trigger permitting from the state fire marshal, which we've heard a lot about lately due to the backlog of work that they have, construction permits, sprinkler permits, and barrier free. And then there is also some other miscellaneous licensing that comes into play, you know, state food licensing, mobile food vendor licenses from the state, daycare gets licensed from the state, and I'm sure Nick could give you a whole nother list. Just when you thought you've heard enough, we have one more column up here. So we have other municipal reviews that somebody could continue on to. You know, the clerk's office issues special amusement permits when there's, you know, a restaurant that's gonna have music and I believe serve alcohol, Chris can correct me if I'm wrong. We have the vitillers license, which we talked about at the last meeting for food, liquor licenses, we have food truck licenses, hot dog carts on public property, opening and driveway permits from public works department, short-term rentals, sprinklers permits, alarm permits, and then every once in a while, we get a commercial project that has a war for a dock that needs to get approval from Coastal Waters. So now that I've totally overwhelmed you with that extensive list of approvals of what we have in Freeport, I'll give you the disclaimer that I might have missed something. You know, we tried to put this together, but I'm gonna give that disclaimer, could be something we missed, and not every project needs every approval here, it's just to give you a, a glance of one of the books. So everyone's looking at me with a blank stare. So what does this mean? We'll give you anonymous, real-life examples. So everyone comes in and they say, just give me a little flip chart and show me how to do it. That would be fabulous, I would love it if it fit into a flip chart, but it doesn't because each property is unique and individual, and they have their own sets of regulations, and they all have different conditions. So what we pulled here is two real-life examples. I would say these are smaller projects and they are easier projects. I think from what I hear, these are the type of projects that I hear complaints on the process, because it might be a small business owner or someone just starting out, and they're doing it themselves. They're not hiring a big engineering firm to, you know, deliver a package to town hall. So this will give you business one example. So this will just give you the background to set it up. So we have a property on Earth that, or a business that has a property in VC1, which is right downtown in the heart of the village. You know from some maps you've seen recently that if you're in the downtown area, you're also in design review, so we're gonna look at the outside of your building. And if you want to paint it, we might even be looking at the color of the building. So this person that wanted to come in, they had an existing mixed-use building, meaning it had residential and commercial businesses in the same building, and there were multiple tenants. They had a space in the building that was retail, and the person wanted to come in and open an office. They weren't making any physical changes to the site, not any parking, not any plantings, not changing walking, no physical changes, had to change that use on the inside. So at the end of the day, they needed to come for a design review and site plan review. Design review covered the signs, and then site plan review would cover that change of use. I will give you a little disclaimer that, as we talked about on the first slide, there's different levels of review, staff review and project review. We have the ability as staff to send something to project review, we do that if it's controversial. We've had it about twice. The other time we send stuff to project review, if they need design review and we can't do anything, I'm not gonna send them to two boards, that makes no sense. And also, like we saw this spring, we had our biggest workload of projects ever. So just all the work that's involved behind the scenes, in this case, the quickest way to get this applicant to a board to get on their way was project review. So this person went to project review.
I have a question, or if the, if the pre-existing condition here of your example is that there's no site changes proposed, and there's nothing major in terms of a remodel on the inside, it's, it's from a retail to an office, which is not a terribly distant transition of use, why is a site plan reviewed?
Because the ordinance you have on the books require that. To give you an example, when something like this comes in, the biggest things we look at, especially in the village, are trash, do they have a way to handle their solid waste, especially when they're changing between? How are they gonna meet the parking requirement? And do our utility providers have the capacity to serve the use?
Would it be possible if the site plan, mic's on now, thanks, Tom, would it be possible if the site plan for the current permitted use, which in your example here is retail, if that was itemized and presented to the applicant who's going from retail to office, and the applicant could aver to you, I'm not expecting any changes or differences, and I could live with what these requirements are, that the previous site plan, which was approved, conforms to the, to the ordinance, or to the zone, I should say? Couldn't, couldn't that applicant say, I, I can live with this, I don't need any required changes, and avoid a site plan review?
If you change the ordinance, yes. And I think, I'm gonna speak on behalf of Nick and I, because we do talk about these kind of things all the time. We feel like there are certain uses where it might be worth us looking at and considering, you know, retail to office, for example, is that something we could set up a much easier process so they don't have to go to the board?
I'd strongly encourage that.
To that point, which I'll give in the next example, is in the downtown village, which we've had for years, if you are doing, if you're retail and you want to go to a restaurant, you can do that with town planner approval. They have the same parking requirement, but they come in, basically just get a building permit if they're doing fed-ups, or sometimes they don't even trigger permitting because they're just replacing a sign, which as you know, I can sign off on in design review. So yes, I definitely think that's an area that if we change the standard, is something we can streamline.
Why don't you show them how long it takes to go through those processes, so that they'll know whether they want to do it?
To show you how, how long it took to go through the process. So we have people come in all the time, less with COVID, but people will pop in here all the time, be like, I'm looking to start whatever business, these are the properties, where can I go? We look at the zoning. And believe it or not, we have property files on most of the properties in Freeport that have ever had permitting. We have records that are good from 86 to present, we probably have records on your house, in case you didn't know. And people come in all the time when they're looking at properties and go through the files to see what's there, to find out some background. So this applicant, you know, started coming in, they were in town looking for a place to go, you know, got some forms, did some due diligence on their own, they picked up a form and submitted it. So in August, they submitted a submission. submitted a submission. We have a 21-day submission timeline to go to the project review board. If this was the only application, there's definitely plenty of time to work with them. If we have 10, like we had on this agenda, 21 days is tough. So they submitted, once somebody submits the application, we circulate it with staff, we look at the 10 or so standards of site plan review. In this case, it was like, hey, you forgot your signage, you know, let's include that. Or sometimes it's, show me your outdoor furniture, you know, whatever it might be. So we have a little bit of back and forth with the applicant on what else they need to submit, so that they have a complete package. They give us any other information, we send our public notification. This person got on the agenda 21 days later, went to project review, they got approval in one meeting to replace signage and get the change of use. We had a little follow-up with them after the meeting, because quite often, these are conditional. In this case, they would need some permits from code enforcement, they needed the sign-off for the sewer to say that they had the connection to serve the new use. So they obtained those things, went to code enforcement, applied on September 20th for a permit, and building, sign, and plumbing permits were issued October 12th. So that's just to give you a snapshot of the timeline.
So it's two months?
Yep, for when they come in, go to the board, and got their permit.
Do you know off the top of your head how long the construction and opening took of that after the?
Do you know how long the construction of that took?
I think like a week. I think the occupancy was held up because there was a parking requirement to dwell what the.
Was for the?
Permit being issued, or the actual occupancy?
The occupancy at the end.
Yeah. Can I go on to example number two?
So is it safe to say two months' worth of review for a month, a week worth of work?
And making sure they had certain things lined up. Yep. So, and again, these, I would say both smaller projects, these aren't subdivision, they didn't need DEP, small business centers. So example number two was also in the downtown, also in design review, and in the color overlay district. We had a multi-story building that was a restaurant. The applicant wanted to change to retail on the first floor and residential on the second floor. This was before you guys added that new definition of mixed use. So today it would be mixed use. Back then, it was residential with a use other, a residential use on the second floor. So they needed design review for the outside building modifications and site changes, and then they needed site plan review for the change on the second story in the site modifications that they were making. Technically, on the first floor for that retail restaurant conversion, they wouldn't have needed anything beyond town planner review. So this one took longer. They started looking at the property they were interested in in late winter. They did some outreach. They were finally ready to have a meeting, so I had a meeting with them on March 10th. We came in, they looked at the file, we talked about the process, they got forms. Now, I will say, one of the things we try really hard to do is in the discussions with people when they come in, if something, once we understand what they want to do, if something gets flagged, like, oh, they're going to need permits from Nick. If Nick's here, we pull him in, or if Adam's here, we pull him in. So we do try to do that more collaboratively upfront. Can be overwhelming if you walk away with a laundry list, as you saw from the first page, but it, it gets everything out there. So met with them on March 10th, about two weeks later, they did their submission to go to the board. Same as last time, we give them some comments, you know, hey, this stuff's missing, get us these couple forms. They got on the project review board agenda for April 21st, in which case, they got approval with conditions, which quite often happens. A little over a month later, they submitted application for building permits and sign permits. And then.
Two months later.
With the complexity of the mixed uses in the same building, they submitted a separate application for the retail, because there was a small retail component on the first floor. So they submitted a separate permit so that they could have it reviewed for the first floor retail, while they still worked on resolving some stuff for the second level. In here, you'll see why is this September 21st and 22nd. They had some additions of their approval that they didn't meet. They had to get that sign-off from the sewer district, and they had to show us that they weren't exceeding the impervious coverage in the village, which is really important for stormwater and drainage. So they submitted the outstanding documents. They then got the permit issued from code enforcement for the sign permit and the building permit for that first floor retail. They still had that outstanding permit pending for the second floor. They needed state fire marshal approval. So the state fire marshal granted approval at the end of October. They notified us of that approval in December, and just last, or on the 13th last week, couple of weeks ago, they just submitted the final plans that were approved by the fire marshal, so that Nick can now do the final review and issue his plans.
When did they submit to the state fire marshal?
Do you know when they did, or maybe you could comment how long that takes?
Yeah, I can't comment exactly when they submitted, but generally, I've been hearing it's four months, three to four months on state fire marshal permitting.
And what about, I mean, I'm following along here, but it looks like actually, our process responded pretty quickly, but there's four months from when they were on the agenda and got their approval to, so that's end of April, third week in April, to the third, the fourth week in August, that the building permit application submitted. Why, why did they, why did the applicant take four months to go from approval at the, at the project review board to submit their building permit?
I think part of this is they didn't own it. Like, a lot of people, small businesses will come in and they'll have these offers for properties contingent on purchasing it. So they get the approval, and then they finalize their lease, or they go ahead and close on the property. So that can contribute to a delay. I don't know if that was their case.
I guess I'm just pointing that out because, you know, you look at this schedule like, oh my God, 11 months, but four months of that is the applicant not coming back in when they could have.
We definitely do see that for bigger projects. They're not going to buy a property until they have their approvals, and then, you know, the banks and whatever need to do their due diligence. Do you know their delay on the specific application?
I cannot remember.
Yeah, okay.
And again, these were just two kind of snapshots.
Couple questions. Number one, what triggered the fire marshals to come in? That was a sprinkle building. Second story was a restaurant to begin with. I'm familiar with the building because I was, I burned the first one down, so, I was chief, but. So, I'm the authorities' having jurisdiction. I wonder if there was enough leeway. What triggered that to have to go to the fire marshal as opposed to you, Nick, saying, okay, we're going to go from a restaurant facility to whatever apartment's going to have, probably the exiting, all that. I'm curious if there's ways to avoid, sometimes with the local authority having jurisdictions, we can do those things, and, and.
Unfortunately, what state law says is any public building, anytime you make a change to, you know, mercantile business, a place of assembly, mixed-use buildings, other things like that, you have to get a state fire marshal permit for construction in a barrier-free ADA under Title V and under Title 25. We do have the authority to have delegated review to do that process. I am certified to do that. We have changed our ordinance to do that. We just don't really have the staffing to add on another 100 permits or something. But yes, the, every one of those, and it was already under an existing state fire marshal permit before, which was all assembly, and there was, there's other issues that went on with that. But there is ways to do it, but we would have to get approval from the commissioner. Otherwise, all these public buildings that you, you do these changes of uses to, they have to go to the state fire marshal.
Well, I just find it curious that they went through it initially, and we probably have the expertise to be able to deal with it locally, and that might be another issue to talk about stream. Thank you.
So is that, well, Caroline, it's 12, Mike's, did you say in your comments there that you have the authority to do some of the stuff with the state fire marshal? I know there's past issues that have gone a lot on your plate already, but if you were to somehow free up more of your time and can do more of that, does that mean that we could, we don't, we wouldn't have to wait those four months for businesses to get the state?
I could do, I'm doing the review anyways. I just don't have the authority right now because it's not been granted by the commissioner.
Oh, you don't have the authority?
I, I have the certification, the ordinance has been changed to do it, but we have to go to the commissioner of public safety, they have to okay it, and then as soon as I get that okay, then yes, I can do the review.
And is that already in the works? We already made that request?
No, it has not been discussed at this time.
I got a question for you. Would that make it mandatory for us to do all fire marshal reviews at the local level, if we did that, or would we still be able to?
We would do all construction permits. We would not do barrier free. They would still be required to do a barrier free type, which is ADA.
But we couldn't split them up. We would, we would have to say, we're taking all delegated responsibility for these and do all of them, correct?
Correct. We would take them all, we would collect the fees, we'd get a certain percentage of the state fees on the previous town that I worked in. I can't remember what it is, but it's set in statute. It's not a lot of money, but that, that's not a big deal. We're doing the review anyways, in my opinion. It's a, I'm reviewing it under the building code and under the fire codes, but if we don't have the authority, we don't have the authority. But the barrier free is easier, but technically, in Title V, it's been this way for a long time. The fire marshal issues the permit, but it's up to the local municipality to enforce it. So we've still been required to enforce the ADA going back on Title V, but we just never did the review before, about three or four years ago.
And I think the interesting thing is a lot of these buildings were already been approved by the fire marshals for those requirements. So it's a small change of use, really, and, you know, the protection of the buildings would, would not be endangered or jeopardized. We could control that. And I think here's an example of where, you know, with, with proper authorization from the commissioner or whatever, we, and, and people trained and, and having a workload or workflow product, we could probably have a significant reduction. So that's something we really got to focus on.
Do you have more, Caroline?
I only brought you two. I'm happy to prepare more. There's a whole bunch of examples I can give you, but I thought this was probably enough for a overview for one night. I would love to hear your, your thoughts and how you want to move forward.
I just have one question. How often is the staff review meeting?
Good question. They're still only really meeting a couple times a year. The biggest thing we're seeing now is really fill permits for people that are doing fill and just putting a driveway, but don't have any other use of their property. You know, in the downtown, a lot of times, people will do these small change of uses, but because they have that design review component, quite often, they need to go to the full board.
So what would it take to have the authority to move some of those responsibilities, which originally, when the staff review committee was put together, that was the intent of streamlining processes, getting everyone together to go over to make sure the building was safe, met stormwater requirements and all that. Sounds to me like we're not utilizing that, and maybe I'm wrong, but I'm, I'd like to maybe.
Not streamlined anymore?
Um, I think it is streamlined, and we have streamlined it in my time here at project review. Like, you used to go to design review, and then you went to planning board, and now you go to one board. Staff review is very limited in square footage and what they could do. You know, there's been a lot of resistance in the past to delegating stuff to staff, whether it be staff review board, or, you know, a town planner, just as one staff person signing off on something. So we could have the flexibility to look at that, increasing those limits, because you're right, the couple limits we have on the books aren't capturing a lot of uses.
And I just think that, that, that process, I think, could be improved. I think we should give a little more, my personal opinion is, you know, a little more authority to the staff review, so they could in fact act on it, because it's a very limited scope on kind of what they're doing now. And I'm not sure where that hesitancy came from, but that's something we could talk.
Yeah, just to clarify, Darrell's familiar with it, but staff review is made up of any of their designees, I'll put that out there first, but town planner, code enforcement officer, town engineer, superintendent of public works, and the fire chief. Those five department heads have the ability to review an application. They do have a notification process. The notification to a better is only five days. That would be the biggest difference. And they meet Tuesdays as needed at 1:00. That's snapshot of the format.
When you say, when you say meet a couple times a year, that's because there's no as needed?
Correct. Nothing falls within that.
Three or five meetings a year, something like that.
Yep.
Yeah. So that does seem to be underutilized.
It is, you know, I mean.
I'd welcome suggestions on projects and applications that are close to that, but are over, but could actually get dealt with that, because that seems like a really good cross-section with a lot of different disciplines, looking at the, the application from different perspectives. And if, if, I mean, that's an easy way to accelerate the timing process for an application, is if we could better define and potentially expand what staff approval, the bucket looks like there.
Like, one thing you could do would be to increase the square footage threshold, for example.
How many, how many applications does that catch that don't need to go to project review board for like, design review or something like that?
I think we'd want to look at it. We could look at the past couple of years and see, you know, if we were going to make changes, what they would capture. We have had a lot of design review certificates. The other thing is subdivision. If there's any subdivision or subdivision amendment involved, they've also got to legally go before the project review board. They need to sign the plan under state law in Freeport.
So it sounds like I'm hearing two categories of issues that come up a lot. One is the ordinances, right? We've got overlay districts, if on overlay districts, and it's a complicated town, partly by design, partly just because of evolution, but there's a lot of confusing and potentially conflicting language in the ordinances that needs to be cleaned up, which is a process. But my guess is you have some solutions. It sounds like you or Nick might already have some ideas on, here are specific areas to clean up. Separate than that is, there's just a lot of stuff going on. Like, it's, we've, we're busier than we've ever been, and we're doing more of the work in town hall, and sort of, I'll say subcontracting, less of the inspections, though I'm not sure that's technically accurate. But, but that's a different category of problem, right? That's more to do with resources and, and people and volume.
Yeah, it's been a busy year. I think when we looked at it this year, we had 50 projects. The year prior, we had 51, you know. Two years before that, we had 38, but definitely, like, the level of complexity, we've seen some big projects, and we've seen some projects that have been controversial and had a, you know, different level of public involvement, for sure.
Is it accurate to say that you, between the two of you, have an idea of, here are some ordinance areas that we'd like to have reviewed and cleaned up, that, and doing so would make a difference in the overall process? Is that a fair statement?
I think we feel like we have a lot of suggestions. You know, if it's something the council's open to, then we can put something forward. We'd love to hear your suggestions.
Yeah, what he said, yeah.
And you'll also hear suggestions from the project review board. That's one reason that they've been really eager to meet with you, is that they have some frustrations. I'd say there's mainly tied to the ordinances we have on the books, and, you know, certain things that haven't been updated over the years. So I think, I'm hearing you loud and clear, I'm sure Nick is too, that you're ready to at least look at stuff and see if there's opportunity.
Yeah, before I forget, hang on one second. Ed, the project review board is inviting us to do a workshop with them in March?
March 16th is their meeting.
Thank you, which is a Wednesday. So in addition to all the Tuesday dates that I just ate up from your lives, there's also a Wednesday date on the 16th to talk about exactly these kinds of things, I guess. So, thanks. Go ahead.
I'm interested, you say, and I heard earlier at a meeting, that there are a number of ordinance changes that could really improve things. How do they, those kinds of concerns and considerations compare to the shoreline zoning process that we're involved in?
Shoreline zoning is a huge project, as you know. It, that's really at just like a whole nother level. I think there's some relatively simple changes we could look at making or would bring forward that are simple, just changing numbers. You know, not this big intertwined project that we have sitting here waiting for us to get back to, but as we add more stuff in the workload, you know, with other stuff coming in and visioning, you know, it's, we got to balance it all and pick and choose.
So you got more specific changes to the zoning ordinance to make an impact immediately, unlike the shoreline zoning, which is a big overall arching process that we've decided to handle in a certain way, and it requires a long, longer term.
Yes, if you wanted to look at making changes to some of these processes, at least for the process that they go before the project review board, for the most part, we're talking one section of the ordinance that outlines what those steps are and what the processes are.
Do you have ideas on the other category of problem too, about resourcing, and I'll throw you in this one as well, you know, how to deal with the increased volume of stuff?
One, one idea that we've been batting around, which some counselors have heard about, both Caroline, I should say, all, all of Caroline, Nick, myself, Judy Holly in my office, have had conversations about, specifically about the workload and codes, which we've talked about, which we've heard about, and looking, looking specifically at Nick's strengths, what he does, what he wants to continue doing in terms of inspections, field inspections, what he's the quickest at, what he can get done really quickly, and then the things that take away from his ability to do his inspections work, which is primarily what we want him for. I mean, because you're awesome too, Nick, of course, but what, what we need is field inspection. But what we need is field inspection, you know, commercial construction, things like that. And I think the things that Nick feels himself that take away the most of that availability are zoning issues, zoning enforcement, shoreline, zoning enforcement. Feel free to spot off anything that I'm missing. I think I'm hitting, I'm hitting most of them. You know, dealing with pre-existing situations, non-conforming, you know, properties that come up during development. One of the biggest things that we have that creates a sense of urgency or a sense of crisis is when there's either a project that's happening or a sale or a deal on a piece of land or a building that's happening. We've seen half dozen of them at the council that have come to your level, and then all of a sudden someone can't close because a mortgage inspector went out. And how did this building get built here 20 years ago? And it's a mystery to Nick and Caroline and myself, the same as it is to the buyer and the seller of the property, who is often three people down the chain of, you know, title from who built the property to start with. And that takes a ton of time. That takes a ton of Nick's time. It takes a ton of the attorney's time, working with the other attorneys. It takes a ton of the council's time. We have two or three meetings on it. Nobody feels happy. It doesn't go well at all. I think our intention is that we're looking for somebody that can handle those specific issues. And we've been throwing around the title of zoning administrator, but that's not set in stone. But that's essentially what we're looking for, somebody that Nick is out doing a field inspection and sees X, Y, Z problems and says, hands it to the person when they get in the office and says, hey, I think that these issues might exist from a zoning perspective. Can you follow up on them, please? That person can then go contact the property owner, talk through what the issues are. Maybe there's not an issue there. Maybe there is. Maybe something was permitted and done correctly. That person can research in the file. But it doesn't take Nick eight hours of his time to figure out whether or not there's a shoreline zoning issue from 12 years ago or 14 years ago or last month. Somebody else can do that while he goes and does inspections. And I'm hoping that that would get us to the point where we could delegate some of the fire marshal review authority. I know that Nick's very hesitant to agree to that until he knows he has the time to do it, because it could really swamp, it could really back up his inspections, you know, his commercial inspections, his residential inspections. But if we could figure out that would work, Nick, I think you're pretty agreeable to taking those duties on, right? If the timing is shown to work.
I would say too, it's not just permits. You know, we've had two people recently on Route 1 South. One person was a new business in town, just innocently came in for a signed permit. And we're like, how are you there anyways? That's supposed to be a retail shop, and you're doing something entirely different, and you have vehicles, and you're on public sewer. And, you know, we have standards. And then we had another one that came in to do an addition. It was last approved as a school, and it's a woodworking operation. And they had never been flagged that they need to go through and make sure they have parking and that they'd need to handle their drainage for stuff they wanted to change. So we do see it, and we do spend a lot of time going through files as things come up and.
Specifically, meeting with people. People who are in that scenario need somebody, I'm not using this term derogatorily, but handholding is a real thing when somebody thinks that they've been running a business for 15 years and they're, you know, their main concern is payroll and ordering supplies. And then all of a sudden, someone from the town tells them, oh, you're in zoning non-compliance and, you know, you can't do what you're doing here. And they say, I mean, it's so far beyond the realm of what a small business owner deals with or a homeowner or a buyer or a seller of a property deals with. They're like, if you're not, if you're not someone who's done it for dozens of years, like some of us have, or you're not a municipal attorney who specializes in land use, it's like this. And it's, I don't use handholding in a negative sense. They need somebody to explain to them. A translator, there you go. And I mean, there may be attorneys involved eventually in the process to resolve it, but not everything needs an attorney. Some of these things can be resolved. And some of them will have to come to the council for consents, like you've seen. But that would be a specific person dedicated to working with the property owner to get to the council.
And the earlier that's done, the less attorney fees are required.
Yeah, hopefully very few of them need a attorney.
Exactly my thoughts there. So in the thought processes, that doesn't take Nick eight, 16, 24, 40 hours to do one case to get it to the council, that he could be going, he could do 15 building inspections in that time and get some of these things done quicker. Not that two weeks or a week or three weeks is a ridiculous amount of time. It's within our limits, our statutory limits and what we tell people, for one, they should expect building permits. But he could be a week quicker on all these if he didn't have to spend a week dealing with a zoning non-compliance issue coming to the council. So I think it would speed things up. I do think there's revenue there in the codes line just from the work that he's doing to support that, where it would not be a tax impact to the additional budget based on the additional excess revenue that he's got coming in from the 1,100 permits a year that he issues. Those are my thoughts. Darryl?
So you've got some ideas on zoning. I want to bring it out here. Could we, when could you have it ready to bring before the council on a couple of things, zoning? And we'll have a couple of meetings. I'd like to, I'd like to get it on the radar here in the next, you know, couple, three months and get it.
Keep in mind that zoning legally first would have to go to Planning Board for discussion, have to go through that public hearing and public notification process, and then be recommended to you for your process. So realistically, I think it is going to be a few months. They're not meeting tomorrow because they're preparing for Design Week. We have plans to talk about cannabis in March, but I think we could definitely get the discussion going. I mean, I think it would also be helpful to hear from you guys what you're hearing and where there might be room for improvement or if you've heard things that we could flag, you know, things that are in our control at the municipal level, some of those things we talked about early, that would be really helpful as well.
Can we temporarily suspend having to send it to them to go to us? Is there anything we can do to expedite this a little bit?
State laws that any land use ordinance has to go to the municipal reviewing authority, which is the Planning Board.
Even when we're making little changes to zoning?
Need change to the land use, a land use ordinance, for example, like a zoning ordinance does. And the reason that it's important to do that is because if somebody challenges it 20 years in the future and they can show you didn't follow the correct adoption process, any approval can get thrown out that's approved under that ordinance. And also, you're probably not going to get, somebody's going to, if a state agency reviewing it, it's going to flag it as not being correctly adopted and throw it back, whether it's DEP or.
So is this easier to blow it up and start again? Because it's going to take so long, or is it?
No. We can, let's wait, if you want to blow up the whole zoning ordinance, let's wait till after the comp plan, and then I'm going to come ask for money. I think there's some easier fixes that we could look at, and we can bring forward and see if it's something that the Planning Board and council. The other thing we could do is try to workshop together. That could save some time. Happy to bring a solution forward and talk to Peter about the way to do it.
Instead of discussing it here at the council level and then you taking it back to the Planning Board, if you could have joint meetings and the council could say, yeah, we want you to look at that. And the Planning Board could say, great, it's on our agenda. We're doing it, you know, next meeting. We're going to hold a public hearing on it. And then you guys hold the public hearing on it two weeks after that.
I think you have a lot of free time in February, so.
I mean, this is, this is a bad time of year for it, but there are things that we can do to speed it up.
And I'd love to see like, you know, we've got one thing to vote on every time we come. Like, let's make this change this week, this change. That way it's not overwhelming, but it's, it's just a constant feed would be doable.
It's not overwhelming if you're not doing all the notices and the public hearing ads and all the public coming in, depending what it is.
That's exactly why I was asking, is it better to make a giant change so you only notice once versus doing lots of little changes? I mean, I would like it to be small and piecemeal, but I see that. So could we make a big change once?
A lot of little changes.
I think it depends, you know. I think hearing this feedback is all really good. I think, you know, Nick and I need to sit down with Peter once we get through Design Week and get our ideas on paper, see which sections it impacts. If they're impacting general sections of the zoning ordinance, we're not going to have to mail thousands of notices like I did, you know, for some other things in recent times. So I think that will make that a little faster and a little more efficient. Would have to do circulation, you know, for public input, but.
What I'd like to do, our calendar here is getting pretty full of meetings and everything. So could we have a consensus vote tonight that we would like to have this to go to the Planning Board that, from a director from the council, to start the process without having another meeting, to get to a meeting to end up with the same result? I'll propose a motion that we ask the Planning Board to make the adjustment as recommended to staff to streamline our building processes in town.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I don't even know, we need a motion other than just a directive to say, like, I don't think any, does anybody object to giving them that directive to say, yeah, bring us ideas?
I think we're seeing seven heads go up and down. The three, Caroline, Nick, and I are responsible for it, and we're going to make sure stuff in a timely fashion gets put forward at this point, so.
And I mean, some things I'm thinking about are simplification, reducing the time it takes for somebody to go through the process. And I know that some of that's not on us. It's on them waiting to get, you know, the applicant to get their things on. So simplification, reducing the time, knowing who to go to. And this is an idea that's come up before as well. Maybe a separate thing than a zoning thing, of course, but having a advocate, an ombudsman, a handholder, somebody to say, it's complicated, help me figure it out.
We have had that to a degree in the past, you know. As a municipal employee, if you come in and want to do something, I can't design your project for you. I can't do your plans. I can't file your application. And, you know, we'll help people go through a file, and we'll say, okay, you could use this site plan to draw your dumpster on it or, you know, whatever. But if they need more assistance getting through that process, that is a role that Keith McBride played behind the scenes for years. You know, it was a way that FEDC worked behind the scenes. Keith had done a lot of stuff. You know, we always joked like he had a business that didn't have a computer, and they needed a menu, so Keith typed a menu. And, you know, Keith would find their signed permits in a file. So that is a role that FEDC played, working closely with the town in the past. And I think it's something we could talk to them as they look for making changes.
I'll just reiterate, I guess, to go back separate from maybe the zoning changes, but building code issues and use issues. I have high confidence in the integrity of the professional staff that we hire. And the five-person team of the planner, the code officer, the fire marshal, the engineer, and the public works director is an excellent from all sides team. And I would strongly encourage to get as much of the routine stuff at that level so that those things could move further. And because I don't think there would be anybody who could say there isn't a thorough review with those five disciplines, taking a look at requests. And that could be a much simpler way to handle a lot of things. I'd be strongly in favor of that.
Yeah, the only thing I think I would be hesitant to bring you a recommendation for that on would be Design Review, because none of ours are trained architects, none of ours are historians. And I don't feel like at the staff level with that current ordinance we have in place, that that's a skill set we could bring.
So what I'm hearing is Design Review is a major roadblock, and it should be eliminated? Nope.
Peter, are we going to fight about this? No, it should not be eliminated.
It was just a question, it wasn't a suggestion.
Looked at and modified if it's still something that's important to our community.
Yeah, find out what really needs to go to Design Review. I thought I turned it on, sorry. Find out what really needs to go to Design Review versus.
And I think you can get some good input on that from Project Review in March. So I encourage you to come to that workshop.
What time is that one?
Tentatively, we're hoping for 5:00 to 7:00 for you guys. Or 5:00. 5:00 PM to, actually, 6:30 or 7:00. I'll get a final time for you. Part of it will depend on how many applications they have come in for that meeting.
Oh, they've got a regular meeting in addition to the workshop?
Yes, third Wednesday of each month. But this month, we have a lighter load. They only have two agenda items. So if they're light next month.
It happens when they only meet once a month instead of every week. Suckers. I don't mean that. Thank you for your input.
Thank you for your service.
They all just resigned, thanks, Tim.
Yeah, you know that can be played in the next meeting. All right. Anybody else want to? It sounds like we've got some ordinances to change, some policies to revise, and maybe some resources to look at during budget season.
Staff to advertise for as well, potentially.
Right.
I'll bring that to you guys with an update at your next meeting.
Okay, great. Anybody else want to comment? We're ready to move on. Okay. Thank you, Caroline. Thank you, Nick.
Sure.
Good discussion, guys.
Yeah, I feel like we're making progress. Mr. Bliss.
Last item?
Last item. Mr. Bliss is here to talk to us about a multi-use path project on Mallett Drive.
Hint, 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 hint.
I'm going to let you use my cord.
Is that pinky?
Don't make the town planner mad if the cord's not back in our office tomorrow. Adam, just be sure you like. Use this mic right here. Nice, Mom.
Not be ready to call out town planner, man.
That was not my mom voice.
She's going to take pinky back. He'll be up the river there with that, so.
That HDMI cable is like the most valuable resource in the Town Hall.
You don't see a pink one, you know where it goes.
And we've got several, but they all walk off unless they're pink like that one, so.
Try not to bang it when you talk, when you talk. Hey, look at that.
Yeah, there's people watching, so.
Shall we go?
Take it away when you're ready.
All right, thanks for your time this evening. My name is Adam Bliss. I proudly serve as your town engineer, the town's town engineer. And one of my many roles is capital planning and project management of town roads and infrastructure. This topic of Mallett Drive is rather timely because it overlaps with this upcoming bridge project that we'll hear more about, downtown vision work. And as you, as, well, I think five of us here, or you on the council, were involved with a referendum vote last year that appropriated money for a 12-foot-wide multi-use path across the exit, the new exit, the to-be-built Exit 22 Bridge. And one of the talking points throughout that referendum process was what does this, what will this path connect into? And so throughout, as a communication tool, we created the Connect Freeport website. We, I created a story map to help tell the story of how this connects to the downtown, how it connects to commuters coming from 295, the Route 125, 136 corridor, and our athletic fields and conservation land out on Outer Pownell Road. Pownell Road Fields, Hunter Road Fields, Hedgehog Mountain. So another role of mine is I provide staff support So another role of mine is I provide staff support to the Complete Streets Committee and what is now known as the Connect Freeport Working Group, the Act of Living Committee sunset June 30 of 2021. And they rebranded themselves as an ad hoc committee, a committee that rolls up their sleeves and looks at bicycle pedestrian-type infrastructure for the betterment of the town. So they're very much focused on doing and working together. And so the Mallett Drive corridor is a great example of how Connect Freeport and Complete Streets representatives came together to apply for a grant through the main DOT for a bicycle pedestrian path from Main Street to the proposed bridge. I do have Doug Leland, a representative from Complete Streets Committee. He'll give his resident perspective and committee perspective. Before he stands up, I'll just give you sort of the background and then let him speak. Tonight is just information sharing, okay? I'm not asking for money. We're not asking for money. We're just giving, we're just, it's just good communication about a very positive thing that happened when the DOT sent a letter last week announcing we were awarded a grant for design, surveying, design, and right-of-way acquisition of this Mallett Drive corridor. And so the total amount of the grant is, the DOT has offered up $200,000 for those services with a $50,000 local match. And again, tonight is not a request for that local match. It's really just advanced communication that as we go through the budget process, that this request will undoubtedly appear as a capital request for fiscal year 2023. So this Mallett Drive corridor has been through Act of Living and Complete Streets for a number of years. There are many planning documents that support a multi-use path along this corridor. So I've mentioned the bridge replacement project, something that we know is coming within the next few years, is the repaving of Mallett Drive. Mallett Drive is a state road owned by the state, maintained by the town. And since it is within the PACS region, the Portland Area Comprehensive Transportation System, we are eligible for grant money to pay for that road resurfacing. So you couple that with our Complete Streets ordinance adopted in December 1st of 2020 and the eventual repaving, resurfacing of that road, and all the planning documents that support this Mallett Drive multi-use path, the timing is right to start designing, surveying, and permitting this path. Again, I could go on, but in the interest of time, I think I'll let it rest and let you respond if you feel. And if you'd like, I could invite Doug Leland, former chair of Complete Streets Committee. He is a pretty big stakeholder, you might say. He's involved with Bicycle Coalition of Maine. Come on up, Doug, to the microphone. He's involved with the Bicycle Coalition of Maine and was involved with Act of Living going way back.
Congratulations on getting $200,000 grant. That's great. And I love the alignment of timing that you just explained, Adam, about several of these things, including the PACS grant opportunity coming together. Perfect time to be looking at all of this while we're going to be watching that bridge get rebuilt over the next 15 months or whatever it is.
Thank you. And it certainly was a team effort of myself and Doug and Greg Mishu, Andy Spalding, Liz McDonald. And so, thanks.
I'm glad you mentioned that, John, because it is kind of a big deal. It's a good-sized grant. And it happened very quickly. Greg pulled us together, representatives from Connect Freeport and Complete Streets Committee. We had just found out that this grant opportunity even existed, and we had to have a complete application to the main DOT within, I think, about three weeks, four weeks. It was a relatively short time for a fairly comprehensive application. I'm probably going to repeat a few things that Adam said, but I kind of look at where we are because we just found out about this receiving the award last week. So I kind of put things into three categories right now. You know, what do we know? What don't we know? And what do we speculate? And what we know is that a project to connect the east side of Freeport with the west side of Freeport has been a high priority since the Act of Living Plan was completed in 2014. What we know is that the multi-use path was also a high priority item at the same time in that same Act of Living Plan. And we look at the bridge project right now, it has the 12-foot-wide multi-use path, but it stops at the end of the bridge. And we're short of getting to the center of town, which defeats a lot of the purpose of having that multi-use path. What we know is that there is going to be a bridge replacement. We know that we have $200,000 available to us if we chip in our portion of it to get this project through the planning and the design and the right-of-way acquisition process. And importantly, what we also know is that main DOT approved the entire project. Our application wasn't just for planning and design. Our application was for the entire project through construction. They approved the entire project. But the funding specifies, the $200,000 specifies planning and design and right-of-way acquisition. That keeps the door open for returning to main DOT for potentially some additional funds in the future. What we don't know is the actual construction cost. Based on main DOT estimates, it would suggest that the construction cost would be an additional, roughly, $750,000. If the project is delayed, then the most likely that number will go up. And what we don't know is what Freeport's share of that construction would be once the design is done. Again, I think main DOT has kept the door open for us to go back and return for some additional funding and...
Doug, could you very high-level summarize what the definition of the corridor is? You say the project, sort of a start and end?
Yeah, the bridge ends at about where the current entrance is to 295 North. And that's where the multi-use path ends. So the project would be getting from that end of the bridge to Main Street.
To Main Street.
An off-road dedicated multi-use path. Right now, if you were, if that bridge were there and you were to come off the bridge, you would have to make your way down the shoulder of Mallett Drive to get to the center of town.
And the 12-foot multi-use path is on the south side of the bridge?
Yes.
That's the plan? So it'll be running along the south edge of Mallett Drive from the, roughly from where that on-ramp road cut is, on the opposite side of the road into Main Street?
That's correct.
Great, thank you. That's a nice visual for me to hold in my head.
Now, there are a few things that we speculate. Freeport is an attractive investment for this type of project. As a town, we have the municipal ordinance infrastructure in place to make us an attractive town for investment. We have a Complete Streets ordinance. That ordinance includes a Complete Streets policy, which at the time it was approved, checked, came in at a rating of over 90% of all the requirements for best practices Complete Streets policy. We also have the Act of Living Plan incorporated into the ordinance. So all of the pieces we have in terms of planning and commitment to these types of projects are in place, which are the types of things that, and I'm thinking of investors, not just main DOT, but private foundations and such, would look at and say, this is a good bet on a town that has this level of commitment. Mallett Drive as the specific project would be particularly attractive because there's already a bridge that's going to be going in that's brand-new. And it will likely integrate with our Freeport Downtown Visioning work, whatever that turns out to be. This becomes a connector. It's a relatively short project in terms of length of a path, as far as multi-use paths go. And it would be a relatively short timeframe from investment to completion. So for those who might want to invest in a project, this is a pretty good one to get involved with because you've got a really quick return on investment in terms of time and money. Ed?
Doug, you know, I don't know anything about the background history of all the things you've talked about, but I've seen this project develop from the bridge and now to the connecting corridor. And my question, I guess, is, does it stop there or does it go beyond that downtown, other directions, east-west? What's the ultimate vision and scope of the project?
I guess it depends on how far you want to balloon it out. If you look at Connect Freeport, they have a rough plan for a loop within the town of Freeport. It goes out, and again, because we haven't talked to any owners out in these areas, it's hard to talk about it in specifics, but there's the potential of connecting into Pine Tree Academy. And to keep going out in that direction, Hedgehog Mountain, Hunter Fields, over to Desert of Maine, Waldorf School, back down Desert Road to Route 1, back into town. Roughly something like that is the long-term vision. The, another component of this is the Casco Bay Trail with the Casco Bay Trail Alliance. They're actually, and I'm on the board with Casco Bay Trail Alliance as well. That's going to be a 72-mile off-road trail from Portland to Lewiston, down the Andrus Gogon to Brunswick, back through Freeport into Portland. So the section from Yarmouth to downtown, which is part of the East Coast Greenway, is part of the Casco Bay Trail, is part of the Freeport Connect Loop Trail, those are all running on the exact same trail. But that's part of the vision. In terms of right in downtown, the Yarmouth to downtown is addressing that piece. At another time, I can certainly walk you through where we are in that project because there's been a lot of activity with acquiring the rights, rights-of-way easements to get from Yarmouth to downtown. We pretty much, we know where the route is, and now we're moving into design phase on a few of those sections.
Planning from downtown to Mallett Drive involved in this?
Well, there's downtown, which is where all the stores are.
Yes.
We have...
From center of town to Mallett Drive, is that in part of the planning process?
What's that?
The center of town from, say, Beans to Mallett Drive, is that part of the planning process for all these pedestrians and bike paths and other things?
It's part of the Casco Bay Trail, and it's part of the East Coast Greenway, and it's part of the loop. In terms of addressing it in specifics, I think from a Complete Streets perspective, we're waiting to see where the Freeport Downtown vision comes in on bike ped. You know, I certainly have my views on that.
I should also mention that this project also will provide safe routes to school connection between middle school and high school. Right now, it's Frogger, if you'll pardon that video game analogy. And this type of project would absolutely, it would make that connection and make it safer.
I know you said you weren't asking for the money tonight, but when do you need the money, or at least the commitment for the local match in order to make the grant legit?
Good question. So at first, at first, we thought this had a 30-day fuse to it, which was why it popped up on the agenda, and I'm here tonight, but after...
First, it did have a 30-day fuse.
It did. It did. And...
DOT doing it again, huh?
No. So I reached out to the grant, the program administrator, and, you know, he was like, the short answer, Dan, or Counselor Pilch, is we have really until June-ish, May-June to make that commitment. But at the very least, just get it documented that we're going through the capital planning process and a written agreement is contingent upon that approval.
Maybe July 1 or July 2 would be better?
Yeah.
Get it in excess.
And realistically, where it's federal money, the monies won't become available until that May-June timeline anyway.
So the project wouldn't start until then in terms of hiring consultants and planners?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Gotcha.
So we're just talking about Mallett Drive, but what about Desert Road and Exit 20? It's all part of the same...
It's...
It may not be part of the same funding, but it's all part of the same project because it's...
You mean the $200,000?
Yeah.
So Peter actually corrected me today about Mount Desert Road. DOT is already making the connection from where the path, the sidewalk, ends at the crosswalk in front of the Irving to the, or yeah, across the ramp and across the bridge, through the ramp and across the bridge. We have an appropriation request in the five-year capital plan for the, to connect from Hunter Road to the Divine Apartments sidewalk that they've already built. So that's in the five-year capital plan. I think it's FY '23, maybe '24, but it's imminent.
So I guess Desert Road, that pathway is pretty much spoken for or done?
To the apartments, anyway.
Sure. We need...
Yeah.
For now, it's a natural ending point, but probably not permanently. There's, you know, that is a commercial development zone further down that road, which could have expansion, and that's something we need to keep an eye on. I think there's a long-term plan. The loop that's shown there is, that's the ideal scenario, that it would continue all the way down Desert.
Right.
That might be, that might be phase 17 of the project we're on, and we're on phase four right now, so.
I mean, I'm very mindful of how we spend money. I don't know if I've worked with a lot of you to, for you to realize that, but it would be really exciting if we could make that, this Mallett Drive connection to the Powell Road, Hunter Road Fields, and Hedgehog Mountain. And to complete the loop and go cross-country through those fields back to Desert Road, and in addition to the Concord Brook Trail, would be transformative for this town. And I can guarantee you, time provided, I'll find every dollar available to us as grant money. I have a, I'm pretty good at that.
Can you talk to the PACS money that you just got us, too?
Which one?
The two we voted on last week?
Good question. So that $25,000 is for the safe routes to school study. It's the EMDOT Bike Ped Manager was clearly said, the grant application you're applying for is for the Mallett Drive multi-use path. You have to find a different avenue for the safe routes to school. And so PACS is that avenue.
And then you also got the study for Route 1 South?
Yes.
Because I don't think anybody up here knows about any of this.
I also got the money for this.
Last time I told, we got, we discussed it a little bit, information explained that...
The PACS stuff that we just voted, okay, well, it all went through.
Mm-hmm.
Adam, has there been any thought or consideration given to private funding? That is, the group of people in this town who are passionate about all these issues coming together and funding some of this to show both support but also to provide...
There is, yes. Counselor Bradley, community engagement is a major component of any capital project and any, certainly of this magnitude. And Doug, do you mind answering Counselor Bradley's question with an example of how this connects to restaurants and breweries and so forth? Or do you want me to take that?
Well...
I mean, maybe I will. This, this trail network we're talking about has connectivity to businesses and restaurants and these breweries and retailers. And we just think there's a, there's, there could be some synergy there to figure out how to get this done, as well as through private funding.
Great, that's good to hear.
Every few years, I go down to Pennsylvania and ride on the Gap CNO Trail, which is an entirely off-road trail. The Gap portion is from Pittsburgh to Cumberland, Maryland. In 2019, and it goes through a very rural area, very small towns, many of them were drying up because the coal industry had disappeared and so on, that trail generated $117 million for that stretch of trail in 2019. In 2020, despite the pandemic, because I was down there last year and asked some people how business was, and they said, this is the best year we've ever had. And part of that's because people want to get outside during the pandemic. But these trails and this type of connectivity generates a huge amount of interest and a huge amount of income for communities that make the initial investment to connect people into their community, which is why the sections we're working on right now are so important because the Casco Bay Trail Alliance is working really hard right now to open up the rail line from Portland, where B&amp;M Baked Beans was, into Lewiston. And if that section opens up, then it's important that Freeport has its section ready to go from Yarmouth into the center of Freeport.
I don't want to pour it on here, but this parlay's into downtown visioning and how patrons or visitors that come into town, they want an all-inclusive experience from recreational to retail, to a bite to eat, to a nice bed and breakfast to stay at.
And the connection to all our other assets all over town, you know, from the farm to the waterfront and all of those other different places.
Yeah, and I was going to lead off with this graphic, but in case it, that Act of Living Plan, we talked about, identified, I think it's eight activity centers, Wolfneck being one of them, the downtown village, another, the conservation lands. So, yes.
I think we have one of your colleagues who's been patiently waiting on Zoom, and she has a hand up. So Liz, if you're out there and you do want to say something that hasn't already been said, now would be a good time to chime in.
Oh, no.
Or maybe it won't.
Liz just logged off.
Oh, okay.
She's shown over here, but not over here. Hold on one second.
Okay. Any other questions while we're waiting for Liz? It's pretty thorough. I mean, this is awesome.
Fabulous stuff. Thank you very much, Doug, for all your efforts.
Vision is exciting, the funding is exciting.
Dan, will you ask, get on the mic if she's...
Yeah. Liz McDonald, if you're there, this is a good...
Liz McDonald, if you're there, this is a good time to chime in if you do have something to say, because we know your hand has been up for a while. And if, if not, that's, that's okay, too.
I guess I've not seen her anymore up there, but her, she's still shown here.
Okay.
It's unfortunate.
Yeah.
I'll just give Liz a lot of credit. She, she does a lot of work behind the scenes and is really leading that Connect Freeport group, I feel like. I'm not there as much as I'd like to be, but she's, she does great work.
And I requested 30 minutes rather than 20 minutes at the workshop, Complete Streets workshop. So we'll use that opportunity to communicate further about the bridge project and the status of other, other projects that are going on.
Great. I, I think we are done, yeah. Yeah.
Could we add number 11 to this list of ongoing projects and make that the sewer, sewer issues?
Sewer issues, yeah. Yep. And I was also going to add a note about the...
Well, it's going to be number, I don't know, you've got all of them here. My agenda has a different...
I shortened it, yeah, yeah. So sewer district, and then also the investment, research on the investment, to come back to you guys with some...
Divestment, divestment, investment, divestment.
Investment and investment.
And then the other is the Caroline and Nick and the planning and ordinance.
Yep.
Chris, it was, the second one was the divestment discussion?
And investment policy in general.
Yeah, investment policy and divestment.
Divestment or investment?
Both. Divestment and divestment. Divestment of investments. Yeah.
Fossilization.
Defossilization of the fossils.
You guys gonna make the same motion here?
I think so.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All right. Unless there's objections. We are adjourned at 9:49.